Good morning, members of council and staff. I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, February 15th to order. Mr. Clerk, directions for today's meeting, and then will you do a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just a note for members before we start today's meeting, we are using the electronic voting platform. I'd like to note for members that when voting opens in the system, there is a half-second delay prior to the entry of votes. So if you could hold off on casting your vote for a second once opened to ensure the system captures it, it would be appreciated. We'll now conduct an electronic roll call.
Mr. Clerk, we have four for today's meeting. Members of council, declarations of... Did you want to... Is there a technical issue really? Okay. Decorations of interest. Mr. Clerk, I see none in the room. Online. Seeing none, we'll continue. There are no statutory public meetings today. We have two presentations. Our first presentation is Troy Cheesebro, Chief Durham Paramedic Services, and Nicole Pincone, Director Business Planning and Budgeting, Finance, in regards to the 2023 to 2032 region of Durham Paramedic Services, Service and Financing Strategy. Morning, Chief, and when you're ready, please start.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of committee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here this morning. I'll be doing a brief presentation on our report accompanied by my friend here from Finance, Nicole Pincone. So I think I want to start off by thanking the members of Finance, Commissioner Taylor and her team for assisting us in putting this report together to what we believe is a nice, robust report that deals with our concerns and addresses some of the issues brought forward. I'm sure to some councils from some members of the community and things like that. So we'll get into the report right off the bat. So essentially, this report is put together based on a request at Regional Council on October 27th of '21 to go back and take a look at the RH report, which was drafted, the comprehensive master plan from an outside agency. And this gave us the opportunity to take that information back and ensure the data was accurate, meet with the other departments within the division or within the region, such as planning, finance, works, et cetera, and determine if we can develop the most robust report we could utilizing that and that the information was accurate. The purpose is to build on service enhancements approved in 2022. We did an updated demands analysis. We're trying to address the employee health and wellness. We looked at operational service levels, external pressures impacting us, such as hospital offload delays, and I've had many opportunities to speak to some of you specifically about that. Facility and asset management considerations, so future growth within our municipality and things we needed there, as well as addressing some of the weaknesses within some of our stations. We're looking at the potential changes to provincial legislations and programs impacting paramedic service delivery, and one of those things could be the CP program, for example. And some financial considerations we're taking into place with respects to that as well. So the report recommendations, the tenure implementation plan for increased investment in paramedic services. We're asking that that be approved in principle, subject to the annual investment approvals through the regional business plan. Giving the significant service level investment needed, that annual incremental increases for paramedic services be acknowledged in the range of half to three-quarters of a percent per year on the overall regional tax levy over the forecast period. Staff, including myself, as well as Finance, we're going to continue to report on this every two years, on the outcomes of the implementation plan, and update as required to any changes based on the forecast, but not limited to anything since service demand, any provincial funding, changes, offload delays, and any provincial policy that impacts the delivery of paramedic services. We'll continue to work with the province and local hospitals to improve hospital offload delays, advance provincial legislation changes, improve paramedic service delivery across the municipality. We are already starting to see some improvements with our hospital partners. We've had great support from this municipality and working with our hospital partners to try to see some initiatives move forward on the offload delay, and we are seeing a subtle improvement in that. So that's good news across the municipality. With respects to call volumes. So we broadcast across here, so you'll see in 2022, our call volumes were about 142,000 for round numbers, total calls. That's codes one, four, one to four, and eight. Code eights are transfer, or sorry, standbys. So a code eight is basically all the vehicles in one area are busy, and we have to send another resource from another area up to ensure we provide a balanced coverage to the municipality. So that's our code eight calls. And the one to fours are emergency calls. So those are the ones you typically see, the ambulances dispatched, or the lights and sirens moving to those calls. A good portion of those, of that 95,000, make up those emergency response calls. So you will see on the slide, we show an 11.2% increase in our codes one to four from 2018 to 2022. Hospital offload delay. You know, so this metric was done basically back in October of 2022 because that's when we started getting our greatest data. We were leveraging the information provided to us from the province. And this data is reported based on information that the hospitals report, as well as our information, because we didn't want to skew the data in one way, focusing on our information only. We wanted to ensure we had a robust piece on our side, and we provided a balanced and equitable solution related to that. So we have seen significant delays in offload, but as I already addressed, we are starting to see a slight improvement. Prior to that, Lakewood Health was some of the highest 90th percentile's across the entire province. Thirty minutes is the recommendation from the province. I think in today's environment, to be honest, that's a little bit light. However, that's the provincial standard we are judged by. And we had seen offload numbers as high as four-plus hours at Lakewood Health Hospitals, more so in the core. So I'll refer to them as Lakewood, Oshawa, and Ajax will probably are two sort of, I'll call them worst performers. That being said, they're also the busiest hospitals within this municipality right now. Port Perry and Bowmanville tend to see lower call volumes, but obviously, they're staffed accordingly for that. So they're not seeing the same metric of offload delay because they don't get the same volume of patients. As many of you know, the loss of the Whippy Hospital many, many years ago had a significant impact on the demands on both Ajax, which at the time was Ruth Valley, and in Oshawa. So that has subsequently, I'll say, balanced out, but there's still a huge void in that area that I know the province is working on, as well as being supported by the municipality with things like that. But that's something that's, the reality is, many years out before we see something like that. So these are the numbers that kind of live through there. I don't need to break them down for you. You can kind of see with the graph. I believe it's pretty much self-explanatory on that side. A little more on the offload delay. You can see that on this slide, I have basically the 2021 and 2022 numbers. 2021, although the call volume had crept up if you compare to the previous call volumes, our offload numbers were nearly as bad as they began to be in 2022. So if you look at the graph on the left, the total hours of offload delay, they're significant. They're in the thousand, several thousands usually per month. You know, a couple thousand in January, almost 2,000 in February, as we extrapolate that across. That essentially equates to 3.6 24-hour ambulances spent in offload delay on average in 2022 compared to only 1.2 on average in 2021. That ends up being 190% increase in offload delay hours from 2021 to 2022. And that's along with the supports we received, despite the resources we received from the province to help try to offload some of these metrics and deal with this data. Paramedic absences. You also see, if you go back to, you know, go back to as far as 2016, you'll see that there was a continuous increase in absences across the paramedic profession. This is not isolated to the municipality. This is across all services. I sit on provincial committees and provincial boards, and all services are seeing the same type of challenges across this, as is all the healthcare. People are probably familiar with lots of the information that's reported on the media about challenges that all healthcare areas are exposed to right now. But essentially, we've had about a 25% increase in average hours absent per full-time paramedics from 2021 to 2022, and a 69% increase from 2019 to 2022. A lot of these are still, you know, short-term leaves. You know, but we wanted to ensure we included everything in this number. So people had a really good idea of where we were sitting with respects to that. We have seen some subtle improvement. And one of the things we're focused on trying to address with this is through the disability management specialist that's forecasted in our budget. We're hoping we can see some improvement on that. Many of the services surrounding us have already implemented a position like this. And this position allows for sort of a more robust direct oversight of the paramedic services to allow for some improvement in return-to-work capacities. And that's really what we're looking for. The mental health challenges within the healthcare profession and across all the sectors now are huge, and we're trying to recognize that. We're trying to be proactive in dealing with that. We have a great peer support team that's basically all volunteered by the staff. The only thing we associate with that is where there's some funding for some training for the members. But other than that, it's volunteer, and that's fantastic because the members are trying to look after themselves with respects to that. And this is supported by our frontline superintendents as well. So we are seeing some benefit with respects to that. Again, subtle changes, but this absenteeism across the health sector is through all areas, not just paramedic services. So when I look at total hours lost due to staff absences, again, it's about a 32% increase in total hours lost from 2021 to 2022, and a 77% increase in 2019 to 2022. You know, we also have to take into consideration there was an increase in staffing. So the number, you know, is expected to rise slightly. As you have more staff, there is going to be more absence. But it was a pretty robust number that came out in 2022, and we're aware of that. Some of that ties directly to COVID absence as well. You have to consider that, you know, we as a corporation took the approach that obviously, if you're sick, we didn't want you in the workplace, and that makes sense. And many years ago, as probably all of us have done at one point, if you had that subtle little cough at home, you came to work anyway. We now recognize that's probably not the right thing to do. And we did have a significant number of staff that, you know, contracted COVID through normal daily lives. You know, a lot of them have young children, and as you know, anybody with young children is kind of like sending them to a little virus factory when they go to daycare or hospitals or schools because they always tend to come home sick. And we've all probably lived through that with children or grandchildren. So, you know, that was the thing that did impact that number as well. So I want to be clear that it's not just some of the other challenges. In 2022, we did have a big impact with respects to the COVID absence time as well. This kind of relates to the down-staffed ambulance piece. So we did have down-staffed ambulances in 2022 on, you know, I'll say a fairly regular basis, far more than we ever had seen before. And, you know, this coincides with our staffing challenges. We had, you know, part-time staff that were exhausted. They had worked many, many hours long beyond what they normally work. Many of our part-time staff do have full-time jobs in other areas. We have some firefighting staff, we have some paramedic staff in other areas. So that impacts that they're working those full-time jobs and trying to work part-time for us, and those were an area that was impacted as a result of this. So that's, we weren't able to backfill some of the vacancies that were impacted. But basically, if you look at 2022 on the absenteeism piece, it equates to about 1.2 24-hour ambulances that were down-staffed daily in 2022 due to absenteeism. Prior to 2022, we didn't have a big number related to that, so to be honest, we didn't really track it. It wasn't something we saw on a consistent basis, so it wasn't something that was tracked. And again, to be completely transparent on this slide, this is not unique to the municipality as well. This was across all municipalities. In fact, some of my peers in Peel, they have significantly more resources on the road for a variety of reasons, but at times, they had as many as 30 vehicles down-staffed in a single day. So it is a significant number. Toronto as well was impacted dramatically by this. The larger municipalities are the ones that were most impacted by this. And they were the ones that were seeing the big down-staffed numbers. And it's unprecedented, we had not seen this prior to 2022. The last thing I'm going to touch on before I pass it over to Nicole will be basically just breaking this down again. So offload delay and paramedic absence is how that impacted. So offload delay, if you look at the average daily hours on offload delay were about 172.9, down-staffing was about 57. And then we equate that to shifts, and as you extrapolate that across, it works out to about 4.8 24 ambulances that we were down-staffed or that we were absent for on a consistent basis. When we take that across and put a dollar value on that, about 8.14 million is estimated, and the operating cost of 1.57 million, the cost of the ambulances spent in offload delay and downstaff. So 8.4 is for the offload delay, 1.5 on the down-staffed ambulances. So that offload delay is a huge impact to the municipality with respects to that. That number is calculated based on the MBN unit hour calculation. So that does take a lot of things into consideration. We're not solely basing that on salary dollars. But again, with respects to that number, that's how I came up with that number related to the cost. So again, significant numbers for the municipality, and just a big impact to frontline operations with respects to the offload impact on staff. Because again, they're tied up in the hospital, and those resources are not responding on a regular basis. We put initiatives in place to try to get the resources back. We were doubling up patients, batching a little bit. We tried to stay away from that because we didn't feel it was appropriate that the municipality essentially, for lack of a better term, I'm going to say funded a hospital challenge. And so we did try to limit that impact, but we wanted to ensure we were providing service to the community as well. But it is a big, it is a big number. It's not to take away from where we landed on these things because again, all services across the GTA were significantly impacted by this, and some of their numbers are significantly higher than ours. I'll pass it over to Nicole.
So, good morning. So as Chief Chair Cheesebro has outlined and as documented in the original ORH report, there are a number of pressures on the region of Durham Paramedic Services. And to address these pressures and improve service levels, significant investment is required, both in staff resources and supporting capital infrastructure. So since ORH's report in 2021, Regional Council, through the 2022 budget process, began actioning the study, the recommendations. That included the hiring of 12 new paramedics to provide 24-hour service across the region, as well as a further increase of four additional hours of paramedic service per day. Expansion of the primary care outreach program, as well as provincial investment in the community paramedicine program, which will address community need and assist in reducing the pressures on the 911 paramedic system. So for the current tenure forecast period, 2023 to 2032, the region worked with ORH to optimize proposed staff investments over the plan to improve and achieve service level standards. So that's reducing call-response times. In addition to the 15 staff approved in 2022, the tenure plan recommends the hiring of 130 paramedics. That's 65 primary care paramedics, which I'll call PCPs, and 65 advanced care paramedics, or ACPs. The ORH report also highlights the need to address resource challenges faced by RDPS's existing support and management staff. So consistent with ORH's recommendations, the plan proposes to hire seven additional supervisors and two additional commanders. And with these investments, RDPS will achieve the ORH recommendation staff ratio of 22 paramedics per supervisor. Also included in the plan is the hiring of one professional standards position, two logistics positions, two scheduling positions, and the disability management specialist position. This last position will be key to supporting employee health, wellness, and resilience. To support staff training, funding for ACP training throughout the plan is also included. The service often has challenges in recruiting for trained ACPs, and having the ability to offer this training to existing PCPs helps address some of these recruitment challenges. The plan also includes a tenure forecast, which includes funding for new ambulances and equipment that are aligned with the proposed staffing investments. The plan provides for a new station in South Whippy and one in North Oshawa. And this is in addition to the new seat in paramedic station, which is also currently under construction and anticipated to be operational in late 2023. The capital plan also includes provision for additional facility needs in North Durham, as well as funds to maintain the existing stations, fleet, and equipment in a state of good repair. So the graph on this slide is from the ORH's modeling, and it illustrates the projected achievement of the target eight-minute response time for priority four calls. So for priority four calls, are those calls that have life-threatening, they're considered life-threatening calls. So the region's goal is to respond to the priority four calls in eight minutes or less, 80% of the time. So it's illustrated in the graph under both the original ORH recommendations, which is the blue solid line, as well as the proposed investment plan before you today, which is the red solid line. This goal is achieved. This is under the condition when hospital offload delay times are aligned with what they were pre-2022 levels. With the proposed tenure plan, the region's projected priority four eight-minute or less response times will increase from approximately 67.7% of the time, which is what we had in 2021, to 80.7% in 2023. This exceeds ORH's original projection. So ORH's modeling projects that should offload delay challenges continue at the levels we saw in 2022, the priority four eight-minute or less response performance is projected to increase from 67% or 67.7% of the time in 2021 to 71.8% in 2032. That's with the increased investments before you today. So that's the performance metric that's represented by the red dotted line on the graph. So the current service level challenges experienced by paramedic services cannot be addressed by the region alone. We recognize the provincial government and hospitals have an obligation to address the current hospital offload delay challenges in order for RDPS to achieve target response levels. There are a number of initiatives that the region, the province, and local hospitals are doing to reduce this gap. And these include implementing the new provincial dispatch system, implementing new and amended models of care, increasing staff health, wellness, and resilience, and continuing to deliver the community paramedicine and primary care outreach programs. We are hopeful that recent federal and provincial healthcare funding announcements may have a longer-term positive impact. So to summarize, the plan provides for 25 new 12-hour shifts over the next 10 years, with 300 additional hours daily of paramedic service being provided by 2032. As illustrated on the slide, the plan projects 59.56 million increase in annual operating expenses over the 10 years, and 89.47 million in capital expenditures. Financing of this plan includes 12.26 million in reserve fund draws, 3.78 million in development charges, and potential of 35.46 million in debenture financing for the major facility projects. The plan also assumes annual increases in provincial funding to maintain the province's 50% cost share arrangement. Based on currently modeling, the plan forecasts annual property tax increases of between half and three-quarters of a percent annually on the overall regional tax levy for the first six years of the plan. Funding of this plan will be reviewed annually as part of the region's business planning and budget process. So the model itself is based on the best current information that's available and is informed by a number of assumptions. So I'd like to take a moment just to highlight a handful of the risks and assumptions that underpin our model. As council is aware, the financial impacts of Bill 23, the More Homes Built Faster Act, will impact the amount of DCs available to fund growth-related capital costs. With the increased growth, additional paramedic services will be required to service this growth, with less development charges being available to support the growth-related capital cost of the new stations, the growth ambulances, and their associated equipment. The upcoming development charge background study will include the additional growth-related capital costs for these new stations, ambulances, and equipment, with the potential to reduce the amount of forecasted debt required for these stations. A second significant risk is the retention of existing staff and the attraction of qualified paramedics. This risk is not unique to Durham. Many paramedic services like Durham are projected to grow significantly. This coupled with the current pressures on the broader healthcare system and a desire for a more balanced work-life schedule contributes to recruitment challenges. In addition, enrollment in paramedic programs is also decreasing. This is something that is on the province's radar, and they've recognized these challenges and are looking to alternatives to stimulate growth in these programs. Providing the ACP training for RDPS staff facilitates a rapid progression to full-time positions early in a paramedic's career, which is often considered advantageous. So given the number of assumptions that have been built into this modeling, as well as the significant number of external factors potentially impacting paramedic service delivery over the short term, it is recommended that staff monitors and reports every two years on the outcomes of this plan. So in conclusion, significant investments in paramedic services are needed in response to the projected population growth, increased calls for service, significant hospital delays, and to support employee wellness and sustain resilience to improve, to ensure that the improvements to our current paramedic response times are achieved. This tenure plan provides a crucial roadmap for service growth and investment over the next 10 years. The plan is subject to annual investment approvals through a business planning and budget process. It's going to be reviewed every two years to ensure the plan is responsive to factors both internal and external impacting paramedic service delivery and ensure it's meeting its projected service performance objectives, as well as being integrated into the region's communication and intergovernmental advocacy strategies to raise awareness of funding needs. While the investments proposed in the plan go a significant way to achieving this response time goals, continued work with the province and hospital partners is required to improve hospital offload delays and advance provincial legislative changes in order to achieve the region's performance target of priority four response times of eight minutes or less, 80% of the time. Thank you very much. We'd be pleased to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. There are a number of members of council in the chat box, so we'll start with Mayor Roy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you first and foremost for this very detailed presentation. And I know that in the current situation, and I'm getting to the question. I know in the current situation that the pressure is not only for EMS, but for all, it's one that everybody's trying to achieve. So speaking to that and working forward towards the next 10 years, and you spoke about it within your risk and conclusions slide, it's really about the future of the growth of what we are going to be seeing, one through the potential within the green belt, but also the identified growth targets that each municipality is supposed to achieve. Within this presentation, how do you see for the future for equity across the total, like the whole region, for the ability to deliver services across with these growth targets?
Thank you for the question through the chair. So RDPS does a really fulsome review on a regular basis of our deployment, and we plot where all the calls are within the municipality. So by effectively getting any of these new resources and placing them strategically through the region, we'll be able to balance that coverage. We're also cautiously optimistic that the new MPDS dispatch algorithm coming from the province will allow us to more effectively utilize our resources as well. We're on a pretty antiquated dispatch system that tends to over-prioritize many, many calls. And the new system will allow us to effectively balance that coverage. So we can take, you know, mostly call volume remains in the south, as most people are probably aware, but the problem is that draws our resources from the north. So we need to ensure we have balanced coverage in the south and put the appropriate resources in the north, so we're not having to take away from those northern communities and we can effectively... So we're not having to take away from those northern communities, and we can effectively balance them and ensure that coverage remains in the north on a consistent basis. So a continuous review of our call volumes and effectively analyzing where the resources need to be will allow us to continue with a balanced coverage and response times across the municipality.
Okay, and then even within your presentation on slide, I guess it was slide five or so, you made a comment just regarding the loss of the Whitby Hospital and the capabilities and capacity of what had taken place there back in the nineties. This huge void, now we're talking about within the hospital delays. It's the current capacity of what all our hospital systems across the region in Durham are able to to support. And the current population has exceeded the capacity of what our hospitals can hold at this present time. Would you agree?
Through the chair, absolutely. I think that's a fair statement. They far exceeded the growth. In fact, I can tell you, I was involved in, early on in some of the development of the new Emerge at Lakewood, Oshawa. And funny enough, when it opened, they already said they built it too small, you know, for the projected growth that they had seen. And part of that stems from the loss of the Whitby facility, for sure. And I have been in talks with the province. They have met with local paramedic services myself and the chief of York specifically about trying to get a new resource, hopefully within our municipality. I know it's looking good right now, but the reality is a new hospital is probably ten years out. So the challenge is what other resources are going to be available. And these alternate models of care the government is proposing to allow paramedics to transport people to other locations from emerged departments will help alleviate some of those pressures, as well as the enhancements of the community paramedicine programs to allow people to treat individuals and their residents. And a treat and refer or treat and release program the government's proposing as well, which will allow paramedics to then arrive at a scene, treat somebody. An example might be, a simple example might be a diabetic patient. And, you know, if you have diabetes, it is a complex disease. However, generally, if you're hypoglycemic, it's an easy treatment to fix that. It's often the underlying challenge is what caused that that issue. So paramedics will be able to treat that individual and the residents, have a consult with the physician, and not be required to trans them to help alleviate those pressures on the hospitals. Because you're absolutely correct, our current volumes, it's not sustainable within the current healthcare system.
Okay, appreciate that, and thank you for the presentation. And I wouldn't be remiss, Mr. Chair, that to take a little bit of this time just to put a public information statement, just that the need for the support for this planning grant is important for Durham for having a hospital.
Thank you. Mayor Foster, you're on the list, and you're off the list. Did you want to speak?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I was going to see if you wanted me to move the report so we can both discuss and ask questions. And I'm happy to wait till the report hits the floor.
Okay, I will come back to you. Okay, thank you. Counselor Job.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, and thanks for the presentation to both you. Without seeing the budget, I am supporting this in principle, much needed. I've advocated for quite some time locally and now at the region briefly. First question is the two year reporting period. I know we're asking for approval in principle, Chief, however, every year it will have to be approved at budget. Why is this not going to be reported on yearly if it has to be approved at budget every year?
Through the chair, I guess the challenge is typically having enough data to effectively report on the impact of the additional resources. It's usually, we need usually a full year of data before we can have that. And by the time budgetary process goes through, by the time we hire the additional positions, get the resources on the road, we tend to have about six, maybe seven months of data. And it's very challenging to give a robust report back on that when you have an isolated amount of data. I'll certainly be able to keep HSSC and members of the council updated with what's going on. But to have a robust and fulsome view of that, I think I think you need at least a full year of data to show the trends and things like that. So that's why we're looking at at the two year mark.
Okay, that's fair enough. Thanks for that. As we know, the north, I brought it up, the committee has some unique challenges. And I'll use Beaverton, for instance, where we're forty minutes, we're in a hole from all hospitals around us. As part of this plan, the ten year plan, if approved, and we also know we have the Beaverton supportive housing proposal that's opening this year. Is there going to be a redeployment plan specifically for the north, given the Beaverton supportive housing proposal?
So through the chair, again, as I stated earlier, we are looking very closely at what our call volumes are and projected call volumes in those areas. And we will be utilizing appropriate resources and redeploying as necessary to support the north. One of the things within the existing plan is an enhancement to, I'm going to call it the Oxbridge Port area. We're looking at building potentially. I'm going to refer to it as a mega station. That's probably a little grand, but a larger centralized hub, which we would be allowed to deploy resources from to more effectively cover those areas. And specifically with addressing Beaverton, you know, if we have more resources in that area, our call volume continues to be relatively low, specifically in Beaverton area. And the one thing we are challenged with with Beaverton is that resource often getting pulled into what was actually Simcoe or in some cases, Cortha Lakes. And I'm in a discussion with the chief of Cortha Lakes right now about having her enhance her deployment to limit the impact on our Beaverton car getting drawn. And we do have a seamless agreement with the province. So we want to ensure that we're, you know, servicing the the public needs. But that shouldn't be on the responsibility of this municipality when it's it's a Cortha Lakes type resource. So Chief Johnson out there is taking a really good look at that and going to put a proposal forward. I'm going to present her with some numbers of the number of calls we've done. So I think that'll help improve and stabilize that that resource in the Beaverton area.
Okay, thanks, Chief. And can we expect updates at Social Services Committee on that?
Sorry.
What's the talk with Cortha Lakes?
Sorry, what's that?
Sorry, when you're talking to the chief of Cortha Lakes, are we going to expect an update kind of at committee on that or?
Absolutely. I can provide an update back on that.
Okay, thanks. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kerr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Chief, I have a few questions here, not a lot, but a few. Would you kindly, or could we see slide number five, please, that showed the various impacts? On, yeah, so trending up just about everywhere except for maybe Ajax. And I'm just curious as to what the reason is why the volume went down at Ajax, but went up so significantly at Lakewood. Is that, what factor or what factors were involved in that decrease in Ajax?
Through the chair, thank you for the question. So essentially, the big adjustment in Ajax was they took a very aggressive approach to dealing with offload delays at that specific site and saw a lot of positive improvement in dealing with that specific area. So that's why, ironically, they're the same corporation. But we had to get them together as well to start to see some of those improvements across the Lakewood, Oshawa site. You know, you have to also consider that, again, overall volumes, Oshawa does still see a greater volume of patients as a result of that. And that's something that that did impact some of that as well. But the the aggressive approach of the hospital itself to try to recognize that offload is a big challenge, and we need to assist and get these paramedics back in the road. That's why we started to see that dip. And as I said, we are seeing it in Oshawa now because they're starting to adopt some of these principles. And we have, we're working on like a really fulsome fit to sit program. And and the chair is kind of aware of what the fit to sit program is and has had some conversations about that as well, and we're hoping to get that implemented. We have it signed off by the hospital now in our criteria, and we're hoping to get that implemented very soon at Oshawa to allow us to alleviate some even further pressures.
Excellent. That was going to be my next question. Based on what we've learned at Ajax, we obviously have and we're applying. So thank you. That's excellent. Slide number seven, please, if we can just pop that up for a second. Pretty concerned about the the increase in staff absences. And, you know, is this a factor of accumulative effect of COVID? Because I might have thought during twenty twenty and twenty one, whilst we had some increases, we just had nowhere near the increase in twenty twenty two. So is this just sort of like finally after two years of exemplary additional service, more and more people were burning out? Is that why the numbers are so high for twenty twenty two?
Through the chair, I would agree. That's probably a fair statement. There was a lot of burnout as a result of the increased call volumes, the added stressors. You can well imagine what it's like to have to wear a mask, glasses, gown on every single call. You're in the summertime, it's already hot outside, you're putting all this additional gear on top of yourself. You're dealing with a lot of sick patients because we were seeing patients that tended to be, in some cases, a little sicker, because what was happening was they weren't going to the hospital when they would have went in the past because everybody's COVID fear. So they would they would wait that much longer before they would end up calling an ambulance. So the staff were dealing with sicker patients on a regular basis. And and the mental health challenges that resulted from that, you know, the fear of bringing this illness home to your family, all the different things that that existed with with COVID that were, you know, although we were at the end of it, and we had a better knowledge of COVID, it was still impacting folks on a regular basis from a cumulative stress piece, and that's what we were really seeing there.
Okay, the third question I had for you, and I have one for Nicole, is the offload delay. And, you know, I had this debate about my cottage where the woman is in the paramedic service in Ottawa. And so I understand that this is kind of a provincial widening. It's not just Durham. So, you know, as I said to her at the time, we're not going to go out and hire a hundred paramedics to deal with this crunch when it's not originating from within the paramedics. It's originating in offload delays at the hospital. So have you a statement or some input you could provide as to what the province is going to do to address a huge cause for the impact on the paramedic service, which is the delays at the hospital? What can be done there? I mean, we've learned from Ajax and we're applying at our level. What can be done provincially, if you will, to lower the delays at the the hospital?
So through the chair, to be honest, I don't have an answer that would be reasonable on that. The challenge at the hospital is obviously a staffing issue for for nurses, et cetera. I can tell you, for example, my niece, she was a nurse in Ontario, and she packed up and moved to Calgary because the incentives were so huge to go out to Calgary that that it was worth her to leave. So we're seeing a mass exodus in the nursing departments throughout hospitals, which is creating pressures in the hospital system themselves. And it becomes a hospital flow challenge. We have an aging demographic, so you have many people that are on the ALC, either long term care type positions, taking up beds in the hospitals. There's no flow. There's no space at the end, so to speak. And that puts a challenge forward on on trying to move that. So from a simple solution, what the province can do, I think the province is working towards some of these issues optimistically, where I'm hoping we're going to continue to see the fifty percent funding that that we need to support paramedic services and will offset some of this growth. But the offload delay challenge and you're, you know, the individually you mentioned in Ottawa is a great example because Ottawa was really pressured by this as well. And this isn't going to be fixed overnight. This is going to take a multitude of years now to resolve the challenges related to offload. This sort of started, to be quite honest, back in the mid nineties. It was called something different back then, but even back when I was on the road, they had a redirect and a critical care bypass consideration. So that was things that happened, and it started back then, and this has just continued to evolve, I think. So it was, I'm going to say twenty plus years of not keeping up with the pressures in the system have finally come to a head that we just don't have the capacity in the system.
And I guess COVID kind of just maybe pushed things over the top, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I just have a little more question, Mr. Chair, to Nicole, if I might. Nicole, I'm looking at slide number ten in particular. We could bring that one up. And I'm sure you have a succinct answer to this because the other day at the different committee, you gave me a great answer as well. If we take a look at, this is a plan that goes to twenty thirty one, and we look at twenty thirty and twenty thirty one, we look at the staffing. Whilst it's been going along sixteen and fourteen and eighteen and so forth, it drops to eight and then four. I'm just curious as to why it would drop then when we are projecting that the population of Durham region is going to continue to escalate. Why would the numbers go down when the population numbers would seem to warrant an increased staffing?
So maybe a couple of comments through you, the chair, to Counselor Kerr. When we were developing this investment strategy and the proposed rollout of staff, it was informed through ORH's modeling. They base that modeling on the most current information that we have available through our planning folk in terms of where that growth will occur. We also knew that there was immense pressure and stress on the service right now. So we wanted to front and load as much as we can, the investment. So that's why we're seeing more of it in the early years than the later years. To your question around the continued growth pressures that the region will be facing, that's part of the reason why we want to do regular reporting back to committee and council as part of this plan, because recognizing ten years out, there will be some changes likely in the growth projections that we currently see and perhaps around the timing of that growth. So those later years, I wouldn't be surprised if there was some changes to those as we bring back to you annual updates. But based on the information that we have available now and the goal of achieving that eighty percent response time for P four calls of eight minutes or less, that is the investment strategy and deployment strategy that's recommended at this time.
Okay, and that's why we're going to ride hard on this every two years and make sure we're on track. Beautiful. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you very much for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. The offload delays, I know you haven't covered that, and the report will never cover that, but every second counts. So when the ambulances are tied up at hospitals, there's a human factor as well in play, which is even probably even more serious than the dollar amount as mentioned, the eight point four million dollars, which I believe that may be a conservative estimate anyhow. Question to you is for the difference in, maybe if you see this here or not, are you going to submit a bill to the province for the extra funding that we have to put out as a region to cover the costs?
So through the chair, we obviously submit through our nine day miller service grant on a consistent basis, the the cost to the municipality, and then the government follows their funding model to determine how that's going to play back. They did have some exception reporting specifically related to COVID during the last couple of years. That has just recently come to an end. We received notification that they are no longer going to allow specific submissions on COVID alone. And we were tying some of our offload delay pressures and some of that specifically to the COVID side. So we were able to recoup some of those costs, but probably not to the cost that it was experienced by the municipality. So, you know, short answer is, I don't know, to be quite honest, what the government's going to do. I'm hopeful they're going to continue to to fund in the models that they're funding in, and we're going to get at least fifty percent, and perhaps maybe a little bit more to offset some of those costs.
And Counselor Kerr touching that through the chair, that a lot of this is the underfunding of our hospitals. Let's call it for what it is. And so so that's that's really where the problem lies. Because if we, they were, our hospitals were well staffed, then the delays wouldn't be there. So let's, that's what, that's where the problem lies. And, you know, there's enough blame to go around, but we got to fix this.
Yeah, through the chair, I mean, it's definitely a factor, but it's not the only factor with respects to the the volumes. But it's definitely a consideration. But, you know, population growth, all the aging population, all those things are factors driving that piece. So we'll continually monitor that. Again, like I said, we're seeing some improvement in offload delay already, and I'm hoping it continues on that path. But I don't think we're going to have a significant improvement, like go back to our twenty seventeen type numbers. I think it'll be many, many years before we get back to that type of piece. But but I would concur that a good portion of this is a hospital problem, but I don't know that the government is going to take a different approach with funding. I can't speak on behalf of that, but I know they are supportive or have been supportive of continuing on with the fifty percent funding model. And again, speaking with my counterparts throughout the province, many of them are putting in really, really robust budget increases this year to offset some of the challenges that we've all seen. And I meet on a fairly regular basis with the ADM, and she's been very supportive of the the needs and recognizes the challenges of paramedic services. So she's a good advocate for us, and I hope that that will continue on. And we can maintain that funding and get that that funding, perhaps additional funding, and even enhanced or a stabilized funding of our CP program, for example, would be a huge, huge benefit because then we could offset some of those other pressures on the hospitals as well.
Thank you. Through the chair, on the cabinet side, I know it's slated to have a new station in North Oshawa.
Through the chair, yes, I'm looking at potentially North Oshawa, somewhere up around Simcoe and Fourteenth Avenue is where we're looking.
Yeah. So any thoughts, have you given any thought, or have the region or, I guess, finance any thought to combining that with, there's always a outcry for for a police station there? Have you looked into working together to make sure you have a dual purpose facility? That would probably save the region a lot of money. And eventually, they will need a police station because exponentially. Eventually they will need a police station because exponentially population growth that's occurring there. So have you given any?
Counselor Anderson, I'm going to allow the question.
That's a part of the report.
You're getting off topic.
No, it's not off topic. It's saving the region money.
Counselor Anderson, I'm saying you're starting to get off topic. I said I would allow the question. Otherwise, members of council, we won't be able to get through the list that we have here on this issue. Chief?
Sorry. So, uh, through the chair, uh, we always consider different options like that. And, and I take opportunities to reach out to our, our regional partners to see if there are opportunities to, to co-locate. So that is done on a regular basis.
So you will look into that. That's all I'm asking. And I, I don't think it's off topic, to be quite honest.
Yeah, through the chair, we always look into that.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson, I thought it was off topic. So I am the Chair. So we'll continue. There's no debate. Counselor Nicholson.
Thank you. Just a couple of follow-ups. Um, just I want to get some clarification on, uh, Counselor Anderson's question. Are we submitting our costs for delay at the hospitals on a monthly basis to the province to ask them to fund their problem?
So through the chair, no, we're not submitting on, on a regular basis. The government has not, uh, committed to us any, uh, potential funding formula as to how we can, uh, submit that. They have, we have submitted COVID costs, um, what they were referring as COVID costs. And we did have some additional, um, funding in there related to that, but not specifically to offload delay. No, we have not.
Well, I appreciate that your threats of the health industry don't want to spend money on hospitals. They don't want to spend money on ambulances. But we sent, there's a guy called Premier Doug Ford, you can get there at Care of Queens Park. Like, why are we not, along with our partners all through the GTA, why aren't we doing a concerted effort to delineate the cost that the local taxpayers are being asked to pick up? Because the province is unwilling to fund their hospitals. Like, we're never going to get change at the provincial level until we put their feet in the fire. So my question is, is why aren't we compiling our costs? And why aren't we making sure we communicate with local MPPs and uh, members of the provincial government that their current funding model is not working?
So, so through the chair, we do do that as an association. So the provincial association, um, like I said, meets regularly with the province and, and outlines some of the numbers. Um, we can't dictate what they do with those numbers.
So you meet, you meet with the premier and the Minister of Health regularly?
Uh, through the chair, no, we don't meet directly with the premier. We meet with our ADM. That should represent us.
That's a concern, I guess, I want to raise. It's a political issue, but it's being dealt with at, at the, the staffing or bureaucratic level. Well, the ADM hasn't got the power to change public policy or change funding. So why are we talking to the person that can't help us? And why aren't we then putting pressure on the people that can't? So I guess that's the question I presume. I appreciate all the work you're doing with lobbying and I don't think this is negative, but we as a council have to understand that we're rating from other lower tier and, uh, upper tier cost to basically fund the provincial health system. And it's, you know, if you use, as you say, it's impacting municipalities well beyond Durham region. Um, if we all got together and made the same appeal, would it not make sense that at least we put specific pressure on the province and at least delineate to the public the cost of what the problem is? Do you not see any merit in that?
So Chief, I'll have our CA will respond.
Thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. We have in fact raised that, uh, with the minister and with the province, uh, through our various delegations at AMO and other conferences. This was very much high on our agenda. And I believe at the last AMO, and I think the chief will correct me if I'm wrong, uh, the Emergency Social City, uh, Services Committee, uh, met specifically with the minister on this issue. So we do continue to raise at every opportunity we get, including when we meet with our, our local, our four local MPPs, uh, to ensure that they're up to date on the issue, the costs and the time delays.
And I, and I do appreciate that, CEO. Um, the question I guess I was putting was if we don't delineate the monthly costs and hit them regularly on what our real costs are, then it becomes a, a one-year issue they have to deal with. If they have to deal with that, information will be released publicly every month. You, you may want to consider that approach. You may want to talk to, if we're hiring the, uh, the lobbyists, you might want to add that to their priority list. Uh, second question I want to put, and I think is more important for our council. Uh, how much are you spending in overtime to offset, uh, missed hours within the service?
Uh, so through the chair, I, I, off the top of my head, I couldn't give you an exact number, uh, counselor. Um, I'd have to go back and look. Um, it was a, uh, it was a big year in 2022, I will tell you that, uh, but typically our overtime numbers aren't all that high. Uh, a lot of our overtime is offset, um, because a lot of our overtime is through special events and things like that. Um, so the 911 operations aren't impacted on that side. Um, 2022 was an exception, definitely. And, uh, I, I'd be guessing at the top of my head, I would say a million dollars, um, but I'd have to look up to give you a more.
So we're losing on average 468 hours per paramedic. According to the numbers that you put in the board. How are we making up that? Are we simply cutting the service and not filling it? Or are we bringing in officers on overtime to fill those missed hours?
Uh, so through the chair, we utilize our part-time staff, um, as often as we can. We utilize overtime when we can. And as it was indicated on the slide, there was opportunities where we had down-staffed ambulance. So, uh, we couldn't fill the positions because, uh, people didn't want the overtime or, or no part-time staff were available. And therefore we were down-staffed ambulance that day.
Right. Um, when I deal with the fire department in the local municipality, uh, they have the ability to tell staff you're coming in, whether you want to go overtime or not. Um, do we have that ability in the, the paramedic and the ambulance service to tell staff, we need you, uh, you're coming to work?
So through the chair, theoretically, yes, we could do that. However, all you have to say is I've had one drink today and then you can't work. Um, so, and we don't want to get into a situation where that's just going to cause additional mental health stress to our members. Uh, it's important that our members get the break from the added stressors of the, of the, the position. And, and to be honest, we are quite different from fire service and you're very well aware of that.
Yeah, I understand. I, I guess the concern I want to put to you is that if we're, we're stretching our current staff, when I saw the numbers on the 10-year plan, and please correct me if I've misunderstood, because I hope I've got it wrong actually, that with all this investment, we're going to move the line from 67.7 to 71.1. Did I get that correct?
Uh, through the chair, that, that would be correct based on the current dispatching model.
All right. So even after hiring over a hundred new staff, we barely meet the, uh, the change in the, the results. And we're consistently failing to meet our target we set is the target we need to do. So my question is, why do we have a target if we have no intention of meeting it?
So through the chair, that's never, first of all, the, the criteria or targets for C-Test 1 and sudden cardiac arrest are set by the province. We don't set those targets. So, um, our goal is always to meet those targets. However, we don't get to set them. Those are set by the province. And they're, I, I can tell you again, they're, they're not met by many people throughout the province.
Okay. If everybody fails, does maybe get to fail too. Uh, the question is, do we agree with the provincial target? Do we believe that 80% is the actual target that we should be meeting and providing paramedic services here in Durham?
Through the chair, based on the current dispatch algorithm, I would say no.
What is the target?
Again, through the chair, I would probably say realistically 70% of the time.
So 30% of the people that call for servers aren't going to be met on eight minutes or under.
Through the chair, with the current dispatch algorithm, no. Um, but it over prioritizes the calls. So I, I can give you an example so it's clear and everybody understands. If I'm playing soccer in the summertime and I roll my ankle, um, I'm a healthy, I'm going to pretend I'm 25. Um, 25-year-old and, uh, and I roll my ankle and I'm sweaty. When I call the current dispatch algorithm, that means it's a lights and sirens response. I have a sore ankle. Um, the person laying there with a sore ankle, sure, that's tough, but does that warrant a lights and sirens response? Or does the person having a heart attack warrant a lights and sirens response? The reality is the heart attack is the one that warrants that response. The current algorithm doesn't allow them to change that vehicle going to the sore ankle to respond to the cardiac arrest call. The new algorithm will fix that. So currently about 90% of the calls that come into paramedic services are dispatched on a code four response, a lights and sirens response. The new algorithm will drop that below 70%. Um, that just started in Peel. So Peel, Mississauga CAC was the first, uh, provincial cap to roll that system out. And in the first 24 hours, they saw a reduction in their code four responses by 29%. Um, so we can now meet that number because we're not sending resources to inappropriate-based calls. So that was the focus of this change and that's what really needs to focus on. We've had a, an antiquated dispatch system for many years. Toronto hasn't used it for, since the eighties. I mean, that tells you how bad it was.
Was that our choice or was that just the province didn't give it to us?
Uh, through the chair, that's the province. They didn't change it.
Okay. Last question then, and again, please don't take my, my questions in any way. Questioning the professionals on your staff because your staff worked their tails off. And I've been a recipient on a couple of occasions of their service. I could ask for better service. Um, my, my question comes out, you know, is basically the question you get from the taxpayers. Are we providing enough service to meet the demand? And what I'm hearing from the report is the answer is no. Even with these, this 10-year plan, we're still not providing enough paramedic response to meet the demands of the, of a very growing community. And I guess the concern I have is raised, I think it was, uh, I can't recall if actually it's Counselor Henderson or Counselor Job. Um, you're going to respond in two years. You know, is it likely that we, we see the, the updated plan in two years rather than seeing 15 staff? We're going to see 16 or 20 or 25, based on the fact that Durham region is growing by leaps and bounds. Uh, so I guess I'm concerned about a 10-year plan that doesn't reflect the, the, how Durham region is going to look 10 years now.
So again, through the chair, we work closely with the members of planning to kind of do a bit of a forecast and a reasonable forecast, uh, recognizing that, you know, this recent change by the provincial government with respect to green belt development and things is going to cause some pressures. Um, but I, I'm confident the report we've submitted to you will help us drive those numbers, uh, in conjunction with the additional changes that are going to be coming from the provincial dispatch center. We are moving to that new dispatch model. Um, we're hopeful to have it. Um, they say late in 2023, realistically, I'm counting on the provincial government. So I'm going to say spring of '24 is probably more realistic to get it implemented. Um, and that will cause a, a much more effective utilization of our resources. So we then can, um, respond to the, the appropriate ambulance, to the appropriate call at the appropriate time and not overtax and overwork the existing resources. We'll have the ability to defer them. This algorithm has been in places like Niagara as an example for many, many years as well. They, they run their own dispatch center out there. And people might, my ankle call that I referenced a little bit earlier, um, they would tell that person when they call, it might be four ambulances before we get in an ambulance, sir. They'll tell them that upfront, um, with the new, the, the system because of the way it is, because they need to ensure that they keep the resources available to respond to those critical emergencies and deal with that aspect of it. So.
Is there some technical problem that stops the province from sending it, that they cannot email you the algorithm? Or send it in some way like it has been used, say Ralsmore? Why are they rolling it out to everybody?
Uh, so through the chair, it's a significant change to the training of the dispatchers. Uh, the old model they used to have, it was called the PCI 2, uh, Dispatch Priority Card Index 2. Uh, the, the new model is significantly different and it involves an extensive amount of training as well as a complete CAD update and a dispatch center algorithm update. So, uh, that's, that's the challenge.
Um, I know that the, many of the municipalities are looking at updating their like fire response and other response times to a modern equipment and sometimes centralizing response. Are you looking to be partnering with that to try and use that technology to help you assist with the algorithm?
Uh, so through the chair, we're actually going to be, I am submitting a, a CAD deployment once the new algorithm comes on board. So dispatch will send the data directly to us, very similar to the way fire, fire systems are going to work. So we will get that directly from the dispatch center.
Okay. My last question is just more because to answer questions I get. You gave us a good breakdown of the response times and the response after Durham region as a whole. Um, do you have the ability to break that down by a municipality or by even ward within the municipality? So maybe we'll get a, a good picture of just how well we're doing in, in chairy.
Yeah. So through the chair, I can certainly break it down by lower tier. It does get tougher to break it down by, uh, by, by ward. Uh, it can be done. It's just going to take me some significant time. I got to enter the lat long, um, coordinates within all the different areas to pull all the calls out.
It's just, I think it would help all members of council to understand the impacts in their own communities. And when we're setting budgetary priorities, it's always nice to have that information. So if we do identify a gap, we can address it rather than somebody waiting a year or two. So, uh, I thank you for your answers. I really appreciate it.
And if I can just make one more comment through the chair, ironically, uh, Counselor Nicholson, Oshawa probably has the best response times out of all the areas because all our ambulances are stuck at the hospital. So we do have pretty good response times in that, that area.
Maybe we should have on foot paramedics at the hospital so we can release the vehicles back to the streets. Because right now our paramedics are standing around watching the wall hold and paint dry. So maybe it's, it's time that we have five or six per hospital just standing there waiting to bring the intake and release the, the line staff back out to do calls. Just a thought you might want to look at. Thank you.
Okay. Remember, members of council, it's questions to the presentation. Counselor Neal.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Now, I was just going to follow up on, uh, what Counselor Anderson was talking about, but also, uh, uh, in that regard, uh, for our new place, our new, uh, paramedic station in North Oshawa, they do have them in Sterling, Rodden and Hastings County. So, but I was also going to ask you about, uh, through Mr. Chair, to the chief, uh, you mentioned a facility was built too small. Uh, what was that in regards to where?
So through the chair, that, that was the Lakewood Health Emergency Department was too small for the, the volume of staff or the volume of people that it was going to be seeing.
Okay. And that is provincial?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, so is there a way to go back to the province and tell them that like officially?
Through the chair, I believe Lakewood Health has done that many times, sir.
Okay. So I was just going to ask if there was something that could be done at this stage of the game to bring their attention to that, but they do know about it. Is that just clarified? Because we're always look, like not that we want to criticize everybody in regards to what's taking place. Like we're happy for any contribution in regards to building or something that they can build. But, so they have been notified and have we ever got a response back?
Uh, through the chair, not, not directly from us. I usually just speak to the CAO at the hospital. I'm sure she's got a response. Um, and again, this isn't new to the, the hospital. They've known this for many years. And this has been something that's been, um, brought up for a lot of years.
Is there any way that we can, can follow through on that, uh, Mr. Chair or?
Well, I, I believe that Lakewood Health recognizes the need in the growth in Durham region, their proposal to build a new hospital. And council has contributed, uh, in the last term to the expansion and, uh, new build, uh, of space at, uh, Bowmanville Hospital. And yesterday we had a presentation at Finance Committee on the, uh, hospital in Oxbridge. And, uh, they're keenly aware of the growth in Durham region and so is the province.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks. Uh, thanks, Chief.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Shearman.
Thank you very much, Chair. And through you, a lot of my questions and concerns, uh, have been addressed. Um, however, you, you, you indicated on a number of the slide presentations about, uh, we have paramedics, that this is not their full-time job. Uh, am I correct there?
Uh, through the chair, our, our part-time staff, that's correct.
What percentage of our, say, full-time equivalents does, does that comprise?
Uh, through the chair, on average, we have about a hundred part-time staff, uh, on a fairly consistent basis for, for numbers. And I would probably say around, uh, 60% of them have full-time opportunities in, in other municipalities.
Okay. So the, the plan that we've got before us, um, is, is, is part of the plan to, to, to change that, uh, that system and, and have more full-time paramedics, uh, working, uh, for the region? I mean, because, because you indicated that, that some of the burnout, some of the absenteeism is, is not a result of anything, uh, we're necessarily putting our paramedics through. It, it, it's a cumulative effect of, of their other obligations. Um, so is, is part of this plan, and sorry if I, I missed something, but is part of this plan to, to address that and get away from, uh, from this kind of thing?
Uh, so through the chair, when we do our hiring, um, and the, the, uh, report that's been, uh, presented to you, uh, for example, it shows 24 resources, uh, required for four 12-hour cars. Uh, we accidentally need 16 full-time resources, like axle bodies and seats for that. So we hire six staff for every 12-hour car. That gives us some, um, capacity in the system to, to offset that. So we've done that for many years, uh, but just with the, uh, increased people that are off due to, um, parental leaves, maternity leaves, all the, all, all the different staff, things that take people out of the seats. That's why we, uh, we, we, we are seeing that pressure. So over the previous years, our. So over the previous years, our, our part-time staff were more than capable to compensate for those absences and we, we were able to fill those um, because we've always hired um, on a uh, a contingency basis, shall we say. We build some capacity in our system when we hire for all the reasons you've identified.
Okay. But so going forward, the plan is to hire only full-time paramedics for our.
So through the chair, no, it's not just full-time. We will continue to hire part-time staff to maintain that number. But we should see typically a reduction of our part-time utilization because we have additional full-time staff. The numbers in a, in effect should balance out.
Okay. As far as uh, one of the, one of the slides indicated, of course, uh, that I guess a lot of this plan is predicated on the fact that we're going to have improvements in the offload delay. And we have seen uh, some improvements there. Do we have, do we have a backup plan in the event these offload delays do not get uh, substantially, you know, improved, uh, because that's obviously where a major problem is here. And uh, this plan is relying on, on improvement there. I'm just wondering, you know, i- if we've got a, a backup plan with respect to, to those offload times not improving uh, to where we want them to be.
Uh, so through the chair, the plan doesn't account for a complete reversal of the offload day. It, it, it accounts for a, a reduction in the offload delay slightly back to um, some previous years. That's what we're looking for. Um, but we've recognized through this plan that um, we have to be able to be prepared for a multi-year um, system because it's going to take that long for the hospitals to try to deal with some of these pressures. So um, the plan does take into consideration some of that. And like I said, probably the biggest impact we are going to see in uh, in some of those things will be the, the change to the dispatch algorithm. That will, that, that's going to be huge across this municipality. And we've been pushing hard to get it because we are a unique, uh, we're kind of a unicorn in the dispatch world because our dispatch center only dispatches this municipality. And uh, all the other provincial dispatch centers dispatch multiple uh, multiple regions. Um, so we kind of said we should have been the test pilot on this because it's way easier to only deal with one group. Um, but I couldn't get buy-in from the province on that.
And that's a shame, uh, but nothing new. The, I, I would agree with, with some of the comments uh, that there have been as far as the, the updates. And I, and I know what you're talking about as far as providing annual updates. There's a lot of information to compile, but I would encourage some degree of regular and, and annual updates on at least some of the stats. Because I mean, who's getting, this is life and death. Uh, this is got to be one of the core responsibilities that the, the region has. Um, I, I am in general support of, of the plan and, and the funding for it. Because like I said, this is life and death. This is uh, where, you know, our, our responsibilities should lie. And I believe you touched on, or somebody touched on the fact of this, this uh, plan as far as hiring uh, additional paramedics and the market constraints. Uh, you know, we're not the only ones increasing our budget. We're not the only ones uh, looking for increases in staffing. What are our real expectations to meet these numbers, given the market constraints on finding these individuals?
Uh, so through the chair, we are fortunate here. We have one of the paramedic colleges right in Durham uh, that uh, trains staff. So a lot of those staff do their um, their uh, rye lungs in Durham, uh, which gives them some uh, teeth in the game, so to speak. And they, they, allow them to live in the area of, of growing roots in the area and they're, they're happy to want to work in here. So we are, I believe we're going to be in a, a relatively safe zone for a little while. Uh, certainly to hire the full-time staff we're looking for, we hire them from our existing part-time. They become full-time and then we essentially hire the part-time staff to maintain that stabilized number. And I, I, I think certainly for the next couple of years, we should be in good shape. I think to be honest, the long-range challenges are, are probably greater if we can't do something within the colleges. And we are working with the, the province and the Minister of Colleges on that as well. Because one of the challenges we have is um, again, many years ago, when I went to school, we had two intakes, so we had a fall intake of paramedics and we had a spring intake of paramedics. So a brand new group was going through and they did that for a few years and then they stopped it. Um, we're pushing the colleges to go back to that model to say, to bring a group in the fall and bring a group in the spring. So you can stagger those um, success rates. We would have a group available in the spring and then a group available in the fall again to allow us to bridge that gap. Because the province is talking about moving the program to a three-year program. And if it moves to a three-year program, we would have a gap here where there's no staff to hire at one point. Um, so we're trying to build some resiliency in the system to allow for that. We're also allowing for um, much like the, the province did for nurses and, and physicians to allow a transfer of colleges and things like that. We're trying to make it easier for paramedics in other provinces to come to our province uh, and, and be able to be employed that way as well. That's something the government's working on as well, uh, to try to deal with some of these challenges regarding staffing.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I, I share everybody's frustration level with how municipal budgets have, have become a funnel uh, for the, the province uh, to meet its obligations. And, and if, if they met their obligations, we'd have a heck of a lot more resources uh, to put into municipal responsibilities. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, questions to the presentation, councillor Brenner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the chief. You alluded to the targeted opening of the, I think it's the new Seaton Station. Recognizing, and I know you talked about the green belt as well, with the escalation of the potential growth in Cherrywood South and North, do you see an issue in terms of not being able to respond to calls within your acceptable standards to be able to reach a potential caller that needs service in the Cherrywood community, um, which is slated, I believe, I think it has to be in place first, first, I think first construction by 2025.
Yes. So through the chair, um, I, I don't, I don't think it will be a problem for us. It tends to be from, I'll call it shovel in the ground till we have any significant population within that area. Um, usually it's about a five-year window from shovel in the ground to that. Obviously, um, the municipality has to put infrastructure and stuff before they can get all that stuff done anyway. Uh, we do have capacity at our, our new Seaton Station to put additional resources in there. Um, that's not, certainly not right directly uh, near that area. But uh, the stations we've built um, since the municipality's taken over have capacity for growth and, and to put additional resources in there. So I believe we will still be able to meet that, that response demand uh, with that. We'll take a closer look as we get more information from planning with respects to exactly how it's going to plan out and, and what's going to be there. Um, and we'll continue to revise that as necessary and, and report up to council uh, any changes that we see uh, required as a result of that additional growth.
I understand that the, I think that the minister is assigned the facilitator to to work with the owners of the Cherrywood North and South in terms of, I'll call it a wish list. And I'm not sure, Mr. Chairman, if it would be our C A O that might have the answer or the chief. Have you had any opportunity to have any input into that wish list that is being prepared or being considered um, as part of the whatever approval process the province is looking at?
Chief, I'll have our C A O respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we have had a number of meetings with uh, Pickering and the province around the Cherrywood development. And we are currently internally working on uh, the infrastructure and services that the region would need to properly support that community when it's built out. Uh, we have not met with the facilitator directly at this point, but we do plan to have a meeting with him or her the region on its own and then in partnership with Pickering.
May I ask, the C A O through, through Mr. Chairman, just a subsequent, just a quick follow-up? Thank you. Um, in that, are you looking at any consideration for a satellite hub station that is geographically closer to this northwestern part of the city of Pickering?
We'll be looking at all the servicing requirements. Uh, so I can't be more precise than that right now. We're still working through what the terms of reference on the financial impact study would be. But we will be looking at all of the regional services that must be available within that geographic area or close to it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, the C A O. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Barton.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First of all, Chief, we would like to thank you and your team for kind of thinking outside the box. You've talked a lot about efficiencies and how to do things better, so thanks for that, especially when you're talking about offload delays. So first question is going to be around the, the changes coming from the province on treating people at home. Just wondering from a billing perspective, how that's going to work? Are we doing that with the fifty-fifty split for the province? Or are they proposing some sort of bill back to O F when we're sort of taking some of the capacity out of the hospital?
Uh, so through the chair, uh, there, there's several different models there, um, councillor, with respects to what we're talking about. So there's a, there's a C P side, so Community Paramedicine side, which deals with a specific set of ailments. And that is currently one hundred percent funded by the province. The regular treat and release, using the diabetic example I proposed, uh, that would traditionally be dealt with through the fifty-fifty funding model at all. There isn't been no suggestion that that's forecast to change. Um, because the, the flip side is there also is, we're, we're already treating those people, now we're just transporting. So there is additional cost to the service if we're transporting them anyway. If we're just treating the residents and leaving them, that actually reduces um, some of the, the cost to us as well and puts that resource back into the field that much quicker. So there has been no suggestion at this point that there's going to be a, a change to that billing model.
Okay. Just a follow-up on that one. Uh, have you sort of, without the, if the offload delay gets solved, do you think it'll still be quicker to treat people at home than to transport them to the hospital?
Uh, through the chair, absolutely.
Okay, great. Um, next is offload delay on your charts, it didn't mention Oxbridge. Do you have current numbers for the offload delay in Oxbridge?
Uh, through the chair, I don't have the current numbers with me. I can certainly get those to you. I can tell you it's quite low.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's probably lower than Port Perry. But in, then sort of to follow along with that, that um, conversation. Do you always, do you look at, at wait times and offload delay when you're dispatching which hospital you go to? Are you permitted to say, you know, if it's a, you know what, two hundred minute delay in Oshawa and uh, thirty minute delay in Port Perry, I'm going to go to Port Perry?
Uh, so through the chair, right now, we're not allowed to do that. The province dictates the movements of all ambulances and they define which hospitals we actually go to based on proximity and don't take into consideration the offload piece. We are trying to get an opportunity to put one of our uh, uh, senior supervisors in the dispatch center. Some services have already adopted that model where they can step in and say, whoa, 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 they're our resource. This is where I want them to go. And essentially, uh, the municipality would accept the liability of the further transport, for lack of a better term. And the reality is they're stable patients that we're doing this to anyway, so uh, it's a very valid point. Uh, Lakewood has been a little bit receptive to that and they've made some changes to allow in consultation with the corporation that we can then notify dispatch that for all intents purposes, I'm going to say Oshawa. Oshawa's closed for the next six ambulance patients, you got to take them to Bowmanville. And we've started that in the last little while and we're seeing some success with that as well.
Excellent. Well, hey, thank you very much and thank you for the work that your team puts in. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Thank you, councillor Shearman.
Thank you. Uh, through you, uh, Chair Henry, I have a couple of questions. And most of the questions that I was going to ask were asked by my colleagues, so I'm going to rest there. Um, I believe uh, you had mentioned a couple of things uh, in your presentation and I'm just, I just need some clarifications. You were talking about the fact that there are twenty-year-old pressures that are being catch, caught up right now uh, or we are trying and the Whitby hospital closures did not help any, anything. In fact, it, it created more pressure. Now, I know that there is an advocacy group and the lobbying that uh, the region is trying. Is there something that you would suggest uh, and collaborate more with the C A O as to how we can lobby in order to help with these offloads and the number of hours that are being wasted there? Uh, not only with our paramedics, but our police as well. And I, I, I can tell you a little bit, very briefly, that when I was having my police ride along, there was a young child that was taken to the hospital and not only the paramedics were helped, but the police uh, people who were there. And it, we were there about, I was there for six or seven hours and they were still in the offloading process. So I just want to know what exactly can we do and how we can target this isolated issue. Clearly, it's a provincial issue and it's all coming down to us and creating that um, that level of uh, urgency to improve this.
So councillor, the chief through his association is in, has raised the issues. The mayor's and regional chairs group has raised the issues. The G T H A mayor's group has raised the issues. And I don't sit on the big city mayor's group, so I'm not sure, but I'm looking to one of the mayors to sit on that. And I believe that issue has been brought up there as well. Uh, Mayor Foster, councillor Roy, or Mayor Roy, just getting my. So we are lobbying the government at every opportunity, including individual meetings uh, when they meet with us, with our N P Ps, to make sure that they're aware of the particular challenges. But this is a challenge across the province. And I can tell you through the C A O's group, they are, they are raising the issues. So the issue is there, it is known. Um, and we await uh, some good news from the province. I don't know when that's going to come. But I think, I don't believe that collectively within this group, there is not a, a area that has not been touched by our lobbying efforts.
I understand. Thank you so much, Chair Henry. And that's exactly, I think this is the single most important issue that is being circulated here. And I think it needs to be repeated again and again. I know we are just talking among ourselves. It seems like it's siloed, but it doesn't. So that's a good thing and I'm hoping that there is some improvement in it because that's the single most important thing that I hear from everyone who goes to the hospital of the wait times and the fact that we are in clear zero cord or whatever that we hear often for social media as well. So thank you so much, sir, and I really do appreciate your time here for answering our questions and the report that you've brought forward. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Coffey.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, uh, to the chief, thank you for your presentation and um, for, I think a lot of the questions have been answered. You know, we, we started, uh, the province started asking in 2015 um, for research into a Durham region hospital. Here we are eight years later and we still don't have um, all the details nailed down. What do you anticipate the risk or the consequences will be if we don't actually get a location identified this year?
Uh, through the chair, I mean, I'm no expert on risk analysis by any means, but uh, obviously, we're, we're going to hit a tipping point where the threshold is, is far exceeded by our current capacities within the, the hospitals, which is why we're dealing with some other things. We are working, uh, recently, Dr. Kyle uh, drafted a letter in support of changing some uh, systems at Ontario Shores, for example, to allow um, or, or, or refer to them as non-critical mental health patients to be transported directly there by ambulance and create their own little, for lack of a better term, a mental health emergency system at Ontario Shores. And that's, that's a small piece to, to help deal with some of these things. But um, it, it's, it's an ongoing risk and you're absolutely correct, this has been ongoing for many years. I've met with the province probably five or six years ago now and they asked uh, to meet with me to say, what do you think of a hospital in the municipality? And my answer was, of course, it makes sense, uh, because I was around when, I was working when Whitby did exist. Um, and uh, it was a fantastic uh, resource to be able to utilize. It was a relatively small merge, but it was perfect for what it has. So there, there's a risk that we don't do. I don't know, I don't know. I, I couldn't evaluate the risk benefit for you, to be honest.
Thank you. So, you know, pardon the pun, but I guess we'll be putting more Band-Aids on if we don't actually get answers quickly. Um, you know, and start the process. So um, thank you so much for your presentation. I do appreciate everything that you and your team do.
Uh, thank you, councillor McDougal.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation through the chair. I just have a couple of quick questions. One of them, I think, was covered uh, partially by Mayor Barton. On slide five, there was a graph with regards to hospital offload delay. And um, we had a presentation yesterday with regards to Oak Valley Health and uh, hospital expansion in Oxbridge. That, that data is left off that graph. Is it just because the graph is just representing the trend and we didn't need um, the Oxbridge data on there to give that to us accurately?
Yeah. Through the chair, it was such a minimal number, it was really non-relevant to the, to the presentation with respects to that.
Okay. And then my second question is through you, Mr. Chair. On slide ten, it talks about uh, increased investment in state of good repair of existing facilities. And you mentioned uh, a possible expansion, or not expansion, a replacement of the facility in um, in North Durham, Port Perry, Oxbridge area. Yeah. Um, is that in the ten-year forecast?
Uh, so through the chair, yes, it is right now. Yeah, it's in there. And uh, we're going to have to do our diligence to see what's going to be the best alternative for that.
Okay, very good. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gordon, councillor Creer's spoken already. Councillor Creer, you're on the list to speak. We are in the committee, the whole. Sorry, come right back to you. So I don't know if you.
Sorry, come right back to you. So I don't know if you, then, so we're thankful for that. So. Uh, next in the chat box is councillor Mairon Piatri.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank uh, the chief uh, for Durham Paramedics' work um, in our community. I think a lot of folks forget how um, how much work went into the pandemic and, and just what um, paramedics see on a daily basis. Um, with that in mind, just wanted to thank you, um, and especially those who are serving the community as paramedics. We have a, through you, Mr. Chair, a pretty um, significant college that provides uh, great paramedics uh, not only to our community, but throughout the province. I think a lot of comments have been made about what the provincial involvement is in helping us. Um, I don't think it's the venue, uh, as, as the chair said, to, to discuss um, what, you know, um, you know, healthcare, built form healthcare sort of uh, delivery models would be today. But I would like through the chair to suggest and, and provide my support for any synergies that we as a region uh, can look at in order to provide for those built forms. Now, the question that I have uh, through you, Mr. Chair, deals with emergency um, units, emergency um, I guess, departments. So just wondering, how many emergency departments do we have in the region that our paramedics visit on a daily basis?
Uh, through the chair, so we have our, our Bowmanville, um, Oshwa, Ajax Pickering. Typically, Port Perry and Oxbridge are the most common ones that, that live within our region that we do visit.
Okay, and they're, they're quite busy on a daily basis.
Through the chair, yes.
So just asking through you, uh, Chair to the chief, uh, we, do we have an ability to be able to make sure on a, you know, quarterly basis, whatever the case is, with the data that we deliver, the province or whomever is receiving it, um, are we able to also then, uh, not suggest, but impose that none of these emergency departments uh, are to be closed? In fact, we need new ones. Because, and I'll say through you, Mr. Chair, the apprehension is, is that regardless of where um, new built uh, healthcare centers are, are provided in our community, that one of them may close. And I think that would obviously be something, and I'm just asking through you, Mr. Chair, uh, to be counterintuitive. Would that not be the case?
No, through the chair, I would agree.
Okay. So just through you, Mr. Chair, do we have that ability to say to the um, to the provincial government who per, is supposed to provide us with the resources for healthcare, uh, that we are opposed to any closures of any emergency departments in our region? I'm just trying to say that through you, Mr. Chair, because I anticipate that sometimes uh, different levels of government like to rationalize resources. Uh, you know, sort of like shift the um, the equation so that it looks like we're getting things, but in fact, we may lose stuff. So just wondering through you, Mr. Chair, if we can do that and how soon we can do that and how often we can do that.
Uh, so, so through the chair, we, we often speak to Ontario Health. Obviously, we're essentially overseeing the hospital group and uh, always uh, get updates on if there's going to be a, even a, I'll call it a potential closure and it was maybe due to staffing or whatever it may have been. Uh, could be something as simple as a disaster, but we always voice concern that we uh, need additional, not less hospitals. Um, and we kind of look at it in that generic sort of uh, approach. So building one should not, i- it's not a replacement, it's a new. That's how we uh, we've always pushed forward to the O H teams.
Inclusive through you, Mr. Chair, of the emergency department, correct?
Yes, through the chair, absolutely. Every, if the new hospital's built, it should have an emerge.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Chapman. Uh, but councillor Chapman, we're not able to hear you.
I thought you turned on my mic, but I guess not. Okay, can you hear me now?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I have a motion to waive the rules to amend the agenda to bring the report forward.
So um, councillor Chapman, um, I, I accepted going to Mayor Foster, but I'll accept him as the secondary. So on the motion to alter the rules to amend the agenda to bring item uh, sorry, item seven point, seven point two four, I will call that vote now. All those in favor? In opposition, hearing done. Mr. Clerk, the report is now on the floor. Or do we need to move?
I would move the report.
Move the report, please. Thank you. Segmented by Mayor Foster. The report is now on the floor. Councillor Chapman, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. And uh, this, this is a, a very good report and I'm sure at least councillors that were around the last term know for the last four years, I've been pushing to get more paramedics. As much as uh, um, we've added uh, some police resources and pushed that forward, we need the paramedics. But this is, this is not just based on hospital uh, wait times and things like that. Those are beyond our control. And I know the chief is working on those. Uh, the one uh, that I was happy to hear was this fit to sit. People call the ambulances because they think it puts them at the head of the queue in some cases. If you walk into an emergency wer, road, uh, room and you're fit to sit in the waiting room while they deal with you, uh, we need that for the ambulances. And I was happy when the chief said that because that clears the ambulance. Uh, the other thing is all the work that they're doing to change this dispatch system. So we have more control over our resources, which the chief and the staff are very good at uh, deploying in a strategic fashion to make sure that the region is looked after as a whole and where those people go. And I'm sure if Ontario Shores gets the mental health emergency, that will certainly relieve a lot of pressure on the other hospitals and on the, on our uh, paramedics. But the issue that is there that we really looked at when we were putting uh, the report forward is the regional growth and it's a projected growth from two levels. One, our planning department and of course, the province projected growth. And do we meet those growths? And the second one is the demographics of our population, the agingness in particular. People are getting older. So having this move forward now with front end loaded, as Ms. Poken, Pincombe said, to move forward will give us a firmer base on which to look at it when, as the population grows. We don't know how much the population may grow past the planning figures, whether it'll be above or below based on Bill twenty-three and building homes faster and where they're going to build them. So having the staff come back every two years and look at that and say, right, planning forecast, we're way above it. We need more paramedics, we need more ambulances is the way to go. Planning forecasts, we're below that so we can stay on track. Or at some point, maybe, maybe reduce if that's the case. I don't, would never suggest that because of, we're gonna grow our population in different areas and uh, the aging population that are calling the ambulance. But those are things within our control as, as a regional councillor, council to budget, to get the staff and the equipment that we control to the proper service area, in this case, paramedics, so that we service the people in our region that need it when they call. The other things, hospital delays, I saw our C A O's working on that, our chief's working on that, uh, the fit to uh, sit. And all those things that are beyond our control are certainly being pushed. And what we, we would need at some point, I'm sure the C A O or the chief or Dr. Kyle would bring it back to us, is when we need to have a formal request, go from a support from regional council on those things. Uh, I don't suggest it right now because I have confidence in Chief Tree, Cheeseborough and his staff that they are working on that and they are making some headway. Some of those changes are happening. So I'm sure that all of council would be supportive of providing this very essential service and expanding it to the citizens, the, the residents, the businesses of Durham Region. And I would ask for a recorded vote at the appropriate time, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, recorded vote is noted. Councillor Chapman, as the secondary, Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're actually getting used to this. Uh, Mr. Chair, following up on uh, on councillor Chapman's comments there. There are things that we control. So there, you know, there are decisions that we make, decisions that we can influence and decisions that we need to live with. Uh, Chief, uh, to you, uh, Durham Region, you, you brought this up uh, last week at Health and Social Services. Uh, the offload delays are worse here uh, than our counterparts, uh, York, Peel, I think pretty much anywhere else. Niagara might have been uh, comparable. Um, if, if you had to look to pass decisions of, of regional council, I mean, if we, if we don't learn from history, we're gonna repeat the mistakes, um, what advice would you give us? And I know your best advice is in this report moving forward and, and I'm one hundred percent supportive. But um, what, what part did we play that we need to avoid moving forward?
Uh, uh, through the chair, with respects to offload delay themselves, I don't know that there's anything as a regional council we can do to, to mitigate that issue. Uh, what I will tell you is uh, in, in previous uh, budget renditions, uh, you know, prior to this, um, there had been requests for, for paramedic staff and, and due to budgetary pressures, and I completely appreciate that. We didn't necessarily um, keep up with the, the progressing demand as we saw it. And, you know, had the opportunity existed then, uh, you know, maybe in hindsight, maybe five years ago, I should have requested O R H to do a report. Um, you know, so thi- this doesn't all land on the members of council and things like that. Uh, because, you know, uh, the reality is, I don't think we were necessarily keeping up with the growth the way we anticipated it. I, I can tell you from, I, I've lived in this municipality my entire life and the growth I've seen in the last few years is outstanding. I mean, it's just, it, it, it surprised me every, I used to, I remember when Town Road was in the middle of nowhere. Um, and uh, you know, now you drive across Town Road and it's like its own little city is an example. So um, I think just the continued support that we're continuing to have from, from members of council um, and, and faith in, in the team that, that is representing the, you know, myself and uh, and Director Pincombe, um, that we're gonna put together the, the most um, you know, robust yet fiscally responsible report possible. Um, I, I think that's all I can really ask of council. I, I, we can't turn back time. So I think we just have to look at going forward and just anticipate and, and look to the support of, of members of council for this.
Okay, Chief, thank you. And, and two questions and I promise that members that, that I think they're quick and brief. Uh, if we look again, particularly at the offload delays, you, you have identified, or at least in the report, uh, a multi-pronged approach to deal with that, uh, is, is identified. And I guess I, I guess I am pointing fingers maybe here a little bit, um, but how is that, that this is an issue here? Uh, not an issue in other areas. And I know, again, that, that you, you have solutions and a variety of solutions in place. Um, but why do our residents uh, find themselves, I'm gonna say underserviced when others haven't? Uh, you know, who, who do we need to prod it to, you know, to, to get on with it?
Uh, through the chair, I, I think, you know, again, I don't wanna point fingers, but I think uh, you know, the current, uh, the, the new um, direction of Lakewood Health Oshwa, for example, is dramatically changed. Uh, the new um, C A O is, is very good at uh, taking an input and trying to make positive change. We weren't seeing that necessarily in the past. Uh, the focus wasn't on uh, necessarily, uh, I'll call it the emergency department. And uh, Lakewood has now recognized that's a, that's a big um, focus of their service and the service they provide. They were focusing on other areas of the hospital because they are a big surgical area. There's a lot of areas, uh, you know, pediatric. When there's lots of big things that, that Lakewood has and the focus was on those areas, not recognizing the added pressures that we're gonna see from the emergency department. And I think COVID really tipped that over the eggs and made them recognize that um, we gotta change our focus. And uh, the new, the, she's not that new anymore. I guess she's been here over a year or a year and a half. Um, but she's fantastic to recognize, you know what, we gotta drive a culture change um, and recognize that having an ambulance sit on offload delay is not acceptable. And, and that's really what some of those other hospitals did early on. And uh, and that wasn't really seen at, at Lakewood originally, but I can tell you they are making a positive change toward that. Ajax has already been identified, was one of the first that kind of started to make that culture shift and recognize the need to get these resources back out. And we're working closely with them to see what we can come up with, to be supportive of their changes as well. Uh, so we are seeing some good headway there and I think just counting on that, that change of culture will, will go a long way to improving the, the situation.
Uh, Chief, thank you. And Mr. Chair, probably to the C A O, uh, and this, this, this is a broad question, I guess it appears. Does anyone keep track uh, of whether Durham Region is getting their fair share? Uh, so we're looking at the uh, significant amount of subsidy. Again, I'm looking at other areas where the residents of other areas um, are, are getting better service on fundamental needs like this. Um, do we keep track whether it's population-based, uh, growth-based? Uh, you know, because the, it used to be that we had say, you know, the province looked at a map and around Markham Road and say, there'd be monsters here. You know, anything east. Um, I would suggest that line might have moved a little bit further based, based on recent experience, but that's another story. Uh, but, but do, but do we keep track?
Uh, that's a difficult question to answer. I think through the municipal.
So I'll tell you what, not to belabor it, why don't we, why don't you and I have a chat?
Yes, and we do have the municipal benchmarking initiative, which does stack us against our competitors. So yes, we, I would like to have a chat about that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wood.
Uh, thank you, Chair Henry, and, and thank you, um, that chief and Director Pinkle. Um, now that we have the report on the table and, and, and I think you did a terrific job on item seven point three, speaking about the Central Ambulance Communication Center and the implementation of the medical priority dispatch system and uh, being successfully piloted or used in Peel Region. Um, now with that system, and again, when you look at, uh, and I'm, I'm speaking about Clarrington and the geographic size and uh, for the most part, when um, uh, let's say a, a call comes in, a nine-one-one call, um, you, you may have police and fire services go, uh, go out. Um, our ambulance sheds, one is in Curtis and one's in Bowmanville, and I'll speak to that one later. Uh, now, the response time and, and out, and so when you look at the geographic size of Clarrington, it's huge. Um, now, is there an opportunity between the system that maybe the fire services use and the provincial one where the interoper, interoperable system where one can say, call somebody off? Because, you know, sometimes the ambulance may be the last one there and if I don't need to be, does that happen where they can be called off?
Uh, so through the chair, in certain circumstances, yes, they can be. Uh, my experience has been most fire services don't necessarily wanna take that risk. Um, the, you know, uh, an example could be somebody simply fell out of bed and uh, a partner called for, well, I'll call it lift assist. Uh, and often the fire service is closer. I'll use Newcastle as a great example. Um, the, the firefighters will attend and they may help the person back into bed, but they won't necessarily cancel the ambulance. They'll notify us that, you know, they're, they're stable, so our ambulance will downgrade to a lower priority. But we will still attend just to do a final check and make sure the patient's uh, uh, stable and, and okay to be left at home. So um, you know, for example, I can't cancel, or if we're, paramedics can't cancel, fire off in a car accident, as an example. Um, because, you know, there could be contaminants on the ground or something where we don't have the capacity to manage. So uh, there is opportunities for that to happen. We see it marshal with police. Uh, police could respond to an assault, let's say, in progress as an example. And uh, when they arrive, there's, there's no significant injuries and they'll cancel the ambulance.
Okay. Now, uh, getting back to the um, M P D S now, uh, item seven point four speaks about call diversion and the uh, use of a, um, a, a program embedded, I guess, within the dispatch center um, a health professional that may be able to provide direction to callers for alternate treatment options. Um, can you speak to that?
Sure. So through the chair, so right now, this was piloted and essentially Niagara is the first resource. They hired a nurse um, to actually sit uh, for, again, I can identify myself here. I remember the old Telehealth Network. I think it still exists, but I don't know if anybody ever calls it, but um, that's essentially the type of system that exists in Niagara. If you call with a minor ailment, they can transfer you over to a nurse. The nurse can then ask you questions on the phone and then determine the need. One of the alternate uh, situations that are being proposed is we can essentially do the same thing with paramedics. So if the call comes in, once the paramedics arrive, they can consult a physician group. Uh, and that physician group can then uh, decide, does the patient need to be transported to a hospital? Or can I speak directly to the physician and um, let's for argument's sake, say it's a U T I, I can order. I can order a antibiotic be delivered to their, their, uh, as in the physician could, to their pharmacy, and they don't have to be transported. So that's, um, that's one of the other proposals that they're looking at, and that's part of that MPDS system where you do like a, a call diversion, um, and it also lies with, uh, different destinations. So maybe not going to an emergency department, but going to an urgent care as an example instead.
Okay, great answer. Um, now within the, again, the report, now I speak the report, uh, 4.9. Um, the province currently provides funding to paramedic services to fund dedicated nurses at hospitals to assist with the offload of patients. Can you speak to that? Uh, I don't know, Director Pincombe, because are you being funded or can you speak to that?
Yeah, so through the chair, we are funded, it's called the Don P Program, that's made an offload nurse program. Uh, we are funded for, that have been for several years. Uh, we were, um, kind of stagnant on our funding for a multitude of years, and there's been a recent change, but it's embargoed. Um, whether we're going to see any enhancements to our funding and, uh, that, uh, that is, that's, we've seen a positive change. One of the challenges we experienced with that though, and that's why we saw additional pressures in 2022, was the staffing pressure of the hospital itself. They didn't necessarily have the resources to be able to staff that Don P bed. Uh, so the proposal that we put forward to the province made a change. So they, the original proposal for Lake Ridge Health Hospital was that it was an RN that had to staff that position. They subsequently went back and looked at it and said, maybe there's an opportunity for us to put a PSW or an RPN in those types of positions instead, and that's what they're doing in Ajax, um, as an example. And they saw a, a bit of a, I, I don't want to say better success, but a, a greater opportunity to maintain staffing of that position. So, um, yes, we do have funding for that and, uh, we've had it for several years.
Terrific. Now, speaking about staffing and, uh, one of the slides spoke about staff retention. Um, and the other part of it too is, um, uh, within the report, trying to encourage young people to get, or people, let's just say in general, to, uh, look at the paramedic profession. So staff retention, if you can speak to that, within our Durham EMS.
Yes, so through, through the chair, um, we are kind of fortunate here, we haven't seen a lot of attrition related to staffing. There's been some retirements, obviously, um, you know, but generally speaking, people just leaving. Uh, we don't, we haven't seen that, uh, in this municipality, others have, uh, but we are fortunate. We've had, again, great support from this council, they are, they, they are well-paid, uh, the paramedic positions here. Um, and that's a, you know, dynamic shift from what it was years ago. Uh, so we're not seeing that same loss, and as a matter of fact, we have seen a couple of people that, that recently left to go to Orange, the air ambulance piece, uh, they subsequently returned. Um, so despite what the original profession was, the grass wasn't necessarily greener, and they came back to the place they love, which is the municipality, and, uh, we got them back. So that's, that's good news for us, um, because, uh, they were good employees and we're happy to welcome them back. So we're not seeing that same, uh, loss that, uh, some other municipalities have experienced.
And the, uh, Heather Quaid, now, yeah, I'll just put something in there, so they're not under Bill 124.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay, uh, the other one about, um, uh, getting people or hiring, um, now, we're, we're obviously looking at, uh, um, in this report and in the budget be hiring, the, um, I, I guess, people wanting to get into the profession, um, do you anticipate a problem?
Uh, so through the chair, no, I don't, I don't anticipate a problem. Um, again, as was already addressed, what the colleges are seeing is an enrollment pressure. They're not getting the same enrollment demands that they had in the previous years, um, for a variety of reasons. Uh, but they're, they're seeing that decrease. So what we've elected to do in RDPS and, and as well as a couple of other services is do the, uh, the proverbial dog and pony show, where I, I went to the college just several weeks ago to have a conversation and just introduce myself to the, the folks there. As I said, we are fortunate here, we do take a lot of folks in this municipality for ride along. Uh, but at the end of the day, if the pool is getting smaller and smaller to draw from, because less applicants are there, um, that's where we run into the challenges. You may be aware of the proposal the province put through to, um, pay for the education if the folks want to go to school in the north and then work in the north, um, because they're really challenged in the north. I, I speak to my peers up in Cochrane and Thunder Bay on a regular basis, and they have real struggles getting any staff because nobody wants to go to Thunder Bay or Cochrane. Um, so there, uh, the proposal put forward by the province is, we're going to pay for your education and then you can subsequently stay up there for two years and they, they hope they gain roots. We're hoping we can get something of a similar, um, model in the south. Um, but we also recognize that we don't want to detract from the, the model that's proposed in the north. So, um, you know, there's been lots of different opportunities put forward or suggestions, uh, such as, I'll call it the pleasing model, for those very familiar with that, where you essentially hire the staff and then send them for the training. Um, but that's a costly endeavor, and you have to look at the, the value add at the end of that, because, um, what happens if they're not successful? There's all those factors that, that have to be weighed into something like that, and it's a big investment for any municipality to do something like that. Uh, so we'll have to see, we're going to continue, uh, we're going to start getting out to the high schools in the near future, uh, seeing if we can convince people, you know, do the grade 11, 12. I, I recommend catching them in grade 11, to be quite honest, because you got to kind of set your goals where you're going to go and, uh, have a little bit of a, you know, that same sort of, uh, process where we can try to entice the, the folks to come into the profession. And, and to be quite honest, the other challenge we have here in the municipality is, we don't get a lot of diverse applicants. We really don't, um, and that's an area we're trying to improve. We're out there trying to lobby to say, hey, you know, come work for Durham. Um, but, uh, we're, we're not seeing that, that same number that's other municipalities are seeing. Um, so we'll see what, what we can do to improve some of that stuff as well. Uh, we're working hard to get some change, uh, but I don't know how quick it's going to happen. Um, and hopefully we get support from the ministry.
Right, and my last question would be about the Disability Management Specialist. And, uh, prior to this position, now for those, and again, wellness of our employees is very, very important. Um, how are you dealing with this, previous, now having this person in place? Um, hopefully we can look after the, the mental wellbeing of that person, the health of that person. Um, and, uh, um, you know, and when they are in that position, to be able to return to work. Um, so how did you deal with before and now getting this person in the place? And in my opinion, I think that person will pay for itself.
Yes, so through the chair, in, in the past, we have a commander that looks after, um, our administration and looked after our WSI STIP claims. Uh, she was looking after the introduction of the enrollment into the program, and then we would essentially pass it off to corporate services, uh, because they have the disability management team up in HR. Uh, so we were dealing with that, and, uh, as everybody knows, that's a very busy position to begin with. And, uh, that's where there were, um, I don't want to say people falling through the cracks, because I don't, I don't truly believe that was happening, but I just think we could have had a more robust focus on, on the, the education and the stuff related specifically to paramedics, because the current disability specialists up in, uh, HR, they're not as familiar specifically with paramedic services. They have the generic and very strong knowledge base in all the other areas, uh, but there are opportunities, I believe, uh, that we can get folks, uh, returning to the workplace a little bit sooner and, and some different modified capacities and things like that. And, um, ironically, I work with, uh, um, a commander in Niagara, um, Mayron, who's developed a very, very robust return to work process. Um, the opportunities for, uh, modified work is like 20 some odd pages long, and it's essentially a computer program. You enter in the person's abilities, uh, and boom, pops up the different types of jobs they can do. Um, so that's what I'm hoping that this new position will be able to do. They'll be able to have more focus specifically on, on the RDPS side and, and start to drive that wellness piece forward for us and come out with some, um, you know, out of the box and new initiatives that, that maybe I'm not familiar with. That's their specialty, which is why I think we need one of those within our division.
Well, thank you for your, uh, responses to my question, much appreciated.
Uh, Mayor Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm going to ask yourself and the CIO a question just with relation to the billing back to, uh, to Lakridge. And, um, I know we had the conversations ourself yesterday, but I know this has been a conversation that's been had before. To what extent, and, uh, through you, Chief, as well, is that, um, this conversation of the billing back is one that York Region does presently? And, uh, will we be looking at doing that?
Other CIO response?
What I believe York Region did was tie its capital investment and hospitals to addressing offload delay issues, and that is definitely something we are looking at. I've discussed it with the York's CIO, and I'm awaiting, awaiting the report that they did on that, which was a number of years ago. But it is something we're looking at.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and, um, uh, through you, uh, Mr. Chair, Chief. And this goes to, uh, what Mayor Schumer was asking, and, and I know that the hiring of part-time versus full-time is not just a paramedic issue, this is a systemic issue within a lot of agencies and especially within healthcare. And that crossover, and we saw through the pandemic, um, where healthcare workers who were working between two long-term care homes or between two hospitals, that that was no longer allowed. The, the format of hiring part-time, will we be looking at more full-time equivalents?
Uh, so through the chair, um, I, I don't think, um, I'll be necessarily looking at more FTEs. Um, I think the number we have, um, does work. Uh, what we're seeing as well is we're actually seeing more people wanting to move to the part-time side, the dynamic shift within, uh, the workforce these days, they kind of, you know, they, and we're fortunate here in this municipality. Our part-time staff has benefits, as, as probably everyone knows, um, so on, on the paramedic side. So as part of that, um, the incentive isn't necessarily there to transition into full-time. The ability to work when you want to work, um, and, uh, balance your life effectively is, is, is very good in that and stable. So, um, our current FTE, like our current, current full-time equivalent and part-time staff, um, I think is adequate, uh, based on, if you look at our overall staffing numbers and the overall FTEs we have versus the actual positions. Uh, so I, I think it'll be adequate as long as we can continue to maintain that. If we start to see a dip in that number, that's when we'll have to take another view back and see if we need to change. And, um, you know, I can, I can, again, I'll focus on Toronto. For many years, Toronto didn't even allow part-time staff, it was full-time and full-time only. Uh, and they started to run into challenges related to that and have gone back and transitioned back to hiring part-time as a result. Uh, so, um, it's, it, it's not lost and, and many other services, uh, everybody surrounding us, for example, has part-time staff. I think maybe what we want to do, or I want to do, is I want to look at the model of how the part-time work, and that's what I want to establish, is there opportunities to leverage that more effectively and create, uh, summertime contractual obligations or something for that folks to, to, to kind of get them in. Uh, that'll be, you know, a labor negotiation piece, uh, it's not something we can just change overnight. Um, but I think that's something we want to look at to try to, uh, create some stability. Um, because if you look at the graph, you can see our summer months are the, the biggest impacted as a result of absenteeism. Uh, and if we can combat that a little bit, I think we'll be in better shape.
Okay, and I appreciate that, and just finally, and just, uh, I know that, um, with the concern for the paramedics is one that's been talked about for a, a number of years, and I know even when Chair Henry, um, I came in with a few of the paramedics to have a conversation and, uh, what, I think collectively what we need to look at is a, um, collective message and one where we're sharing, uh, on behalf of the region of Durham, what those needs are, um, especially with the shortfalls, uh, for the funding, uh, for the, the emergency services. This past, uh, summer while door knocking for this election, I had, um, knocked on a door, and it was the day after the, the daughter had just lost her mother, and, uh, um, it was not for the sake that the delay was from, from the ambulance, but, uh, she shared that the, that took about 20 minutes for the, um, the ambulance to arrive. The mother was going to pass, um, they did know that and they did not blame it on the emergency services. But if the situation was different, and I, I think that is one, and I know it was shared back to, um, to the ambulance services, uh, as well too, as to their situation. But I think we just not make sure that we do not have that situation potentially occur and look at how we can support as a whole the, the resources for our paramedics. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Nicholson.
Yes, so thank you, I just want to get a couple of points clarified in my mind. When you say that the province provides 50% of our funding, um, is that 50% of whatever level we set? Or do they cap their contribution?
Uh, through the chair, it's 50% of essentially whatever our budgetary line is for that year. We're, we're always funded one-year retro, so to speak, though it's kind of a challenging system, and I probably have to get Director Pincombe to give you a more detail, but I can tell you, um, when they give us our funding letter, it's on the previous year's, um, actual budgetary numbers, and it's the total budget number. They do annualize the capital expenditures, um, so there's some annualization pieces in there. But generally speaking, if you look at our budget outline, it defines what we're receiving from the province, uh, in there, and, and that, that identifies, and it's generally about 50%.
All right, so the, the 24 frontline staff or 30 total, uh, half of that cost can be picked up by the province?
Through the chair, that's correct, half will be picked up by the-
So we doubled that, they would pick up half of the doubled amount as well?
That, that's right, through the chair, that's correct, they, they would. One of our challenges, if we expand those numbers as well though, and, and, uh, you know, I, I know people appreciate the challenges getting, uh, a new vehicle, for example, is, we can't even get new ambulances right now. So I could have 100 staff, if I don't have an ambulance to put them in, they're not much value to me. Um, so that, that's one of the challenges we're experiencing right now. I think, again, in working with, uh, with my team here from finance and, uh, coming up, I think we have, uh, you know, a balanced report that I think can, can address this. But to your point, uh, Counselor, uh, yes, in theory, they would pay 50% of whatever we had.
And I thank you for that, because that actually leads into my next question. Many times I've been at the hospital, visiting people, and noticed that there's sometimes four, five, six ambulances parked on the back of the hospital, and you get into the hallway, um, there's two paramedics per stretcher, and there's probably more paramedics in the hospital than traveling the streets of my community. Um, is there any ability for us to place either part-time paramedics or, or trained paramedics, actually station them at the hospital? So that when the, the trucks come in, the ambulances come in with the patients, that they can be placed in the hallway, uh, almost like a pre-triage situation, where one or two trained paramedics can look after those that are waiting and making sure that they're safe and treated, and make sure there's no emergencies? Um, rather than having eight or 10 paramedics and four or five ambulances sitting there, um, for all due purposes, and I'd say this respectfully, watching the patient? And so is there a way to do a, a pre-triage? So that we can get more ambulances and more paramedics back out on the ability to, to go to calls, as opposed to standing around?
Uh, so through the chair, one of the challenges for that is legislatively, uh, we don't have a similar model of, of nursing, for example. So nursing, uh, outside of ICU, CCU tends to go to a greater than a one-to-one model. Um, often it will be, uh, I, I don't know the exact number, so I apologize, I'm going to say it's six or eight, um, patients that, that a nurse can look after. Uh, that doesn't exist in the paramedic world, essentially we are designed to work, um, one-to-one as an example. So, um, what you just shared, the potential to take 50% of those people away may exist. Um, but we don't, we see that as solving a hospital problem as well, uh, and we have done that. Um, so when we get really strapped for coverage on the road, we absolutely do that. We just didn't want to set the bar on a consistent basis that we were going to do that and then the hospital not worry about mitigating or dealing with their offload challenge. So, um, we do it when necessary, uh, we just don't want to set the rule that that's going to be the norm for our service.
Well, the reason I was asking is at least that if we did that, we could get the province to pick up 50% of the cost. You know, and that's, you know, the, right now, we have highly trained, in some cases highly experienced, paramedics who could provide a level of service to our communities, who are standing around hospitals for orders and sometimes for hours on end. And that, we understand the strain that hospitals under, and there's no way, uh, my comments touch mountains of the hard-working staff of the hospitals. We all know there's not enough of them as well. Um, but I, I just, it doesn't make logical sense to me to have, you know, eight or 10 people standing around where, uh, one or two trained staff could monitor those five patients. Uh, because all, they're not being treated, they're just sitting there in the, in the hallway and ends, hoping that they don't get worse. And if they do get worse, then they're moved up to the front of the line and they're, they're put into the emergency. Uh, what I'm concerned about is maximizing the best use of our staff. Um, and, you know, it's, it's, it's got to be frustrating to our staff that, you know, there's cases out there and you're bringing people into Markham, or you're bringing people into Toronto, while we got trained staff and vehicles and equipment and drugs and everything sitting there, not being used because they, they can't get them up to queue. So I just wonder if that's something you might want to seriously look at. And at least as an interim step until the province can get their act together at the hospital. Um, so I want to leave that with you. The second point, um, I just want to be clear in my mind, um, is that when we do respond, you said there's a tiered response. Obviously, when they get to the hospital, uh, are the tiered responses, like is the level four moved up the line as opposed to a level one? Or is it, uh, because they don't- one? Or is it, because they don't do the triage, so I'm just wondering, is there, who makes the call about who goes up the line?
So I understand. So through the chair, I'll kind of address your first point as well. The one thing that you have to consider as well is it's not as simple as just placing a body there to watch a patient, because all the equipment that's being utilized by that patient, now we have to have redundancy. So, you know, if you look at a stretcher, a stretcher's $30,000, a defibrillator's $35,000, oxygen equipment, all of those things that may be tied up on that patient, we would have to buy those additional resources. And you're absolutely correct that we theoretically can build a province 50%, but if I had, for example, 30 spare stretchers sitting around, the province is going to go hold the boat, right? And they're not going to fund that. So, you know, we have to be cautious of that piece as well. So it's not, it's, believe me, I have looked at those options and it's not as simple as just put a couple of resources there to look after those patients. And, you know, Toronto is a great example. They did that years and years ago. Toronto purchased all the stretchers, stuck them in a one room in the hospital, and they put modified duty staff in there looking after those staff. But then the risk is, what happens if something bad happens to one of those patients? You have a modified duties personnel that maybe can't do CPR, because part of the restrictions say I can't do CPR. Yes, they're in a hospital setting, but you don't get immediate response, I can tell you that. Even when you pull that code blue button, it takes time for resources to get there and we don't want to be part of that. So that is one of the challenges related to that. So that kind of addresses that piece of it. And I'm sorry, I kind of lost my track. What was the second part of your question?
Just when we actually get to the hospitals with the staff, would I be correct in assuming that those who are on the level four case would move up the line over those that are three, two, or one case?
Yes, that's correct. So we actually use a C task priority when we get to the hospital. So C task five is my sore ankle guy laying on the field. And a C task one, so the current reporting structure, when we talk about response times, it's based on C task. So C task one, sudden cardiac arrest, C task one are the ones defined by the province. And C task two through five are set by myself and Regional Council. So that, yes, the higher, the higher the C task level, the quicker you are seen. If you're a C task one coming through the emergency department, you're seen virtually immediately. C task twos are supposed to be assessed within 15 minutes of arrival at the hospital and the time window starts to lengthen as you go further down that. So absolutely, that is, they are triaged exactly as you said, coming through the door. Really sick patients, we actually call the hospital ahead of time to give them a heads up that we're coming in with a really sick patient and they're waiting for us at the door when we arrive and we reel right into the appropriate room.
Do we track the response, how quickly we meet those targets?
Through the chair, yes, we track our C task response.
The reason I ask that is that's a question to get asked. Now, if I call the ambulance, will I get a serious injury? Will I get treated quickly? Or will I sit in the hallway? And there are so many people who don't call the ambulance and they don't call for help, because they don't want to sit in the hallway. So I'm wondering if we can somehow communicate the fact that if you're seriously ill, you are going to be treated. It's only those that have minor injuries that are in longer-term delay. We may want to stress that. So I just want to leave that with you. Just speaking to the motion, Mr. Chair. Obviously, I'm going to support it. I'd be stunned if this wasn't a unanimous motion. It's definitely a step in the right direction. I'm fearful that it's not going to be enough, as I think Durham's growth is going to outstrip our projections. I know our staff tried to do their best to get the projections right, but I can tell you, my own community, we got an update last week and we're now at 190,000 people. Projected to go over 200 before this term is over. We're seeing with new bill 23, more and more density. So for a lot of the urbanized communities here in Durham, we're going to see a lot more people. We're seeing for the first time 25-story, 35-story apartment buildings as opposed to neighborhoods. So I look at, I think the population projections may find their results to be a little conservative. And if they are, I would hope all of us in improving this tangible plan would support when the review comes out in two years' time. If we have to update those figures, then we update those figures. I have a simple rule personally, as a counselor, that fire, police, and ambulance are our number one priorities. They're the ones that we deal with first because they deal with immediate health and safety in life. Obviously, our health departments, nutters, paramedic care are key parts of that equation as well. But we need to, in passing this particular plan, I'm sure we're going to get a good communications message from our staff. It's something we need to spread through our community to let them know that we are serious about addressing this issue and that it's, we're stepping up and it's time for the province to step up as well. Thank you.
So Counselor Nicholson, just to add to that, well, this is a 10-year plan. This would not mitigate the chief coming back to us in two years saying that the growth has been exponential. We have gone outside of what our targeted growth was for those, you know, the next five years to come back to us as a form of a living document, say, we need to make changes. This is a plan going forward, but it really is a living document, Chief.
Yeah. And, Mr. Chair, that's exactly the point I think I was trying to make and I agree with you. I think that we need to, how do I put this, but sometimes it's helpful for us to spread our own message rather than expecting someone to decide whether it's going to make it an immediate item or not. This is a good news item. This shows a level of commitment from our staff and both through the department and through our financial staff and their leadership and council, that we're not going to sit back on our laurels. We're going to actually fix this problem and whatever it takes. And I would not be surprised that in two years' time, or even potentially sooner, depending on growth, that the chief's going to be back before us saying, we need more services, we need more equipment, we need more support. The old saying, healthcare is not a frill. We need to convince the province for that, that they understand that healthcare is not a frill, because I seem to be treating it as a frill. And I can tell you, I have a nurse in my family and she just shakes her head sometimes on how the nurses and the support staff are treated. Our paramedics are being treated just as badly by the province. And it's time that we collectively, through all our organizations and all our councils, not just in Durham, but all around the province, start pressuring the province to start saying, either you step up or step aside, because quite honestly, you're not doing the job right now. Thank you.
Counselor Shear.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Henry. First of all, I'd like to thank Chief for taking our questions for over two hours. I really do appreciate it. I'm sure your legs are hurting, who are getting there. So I would be very, very quick right now. You talked about hires and there are 12 new hires on page three of the report. And I'd like to just talk about the fact, and you did touch on it, on the fact that there's lack of diversity. Now, I understand the college, people, people take interest themselves, go to the college, get trained, and then the hiring process happens. So is there anything that your organization has done in terms of info session for bringing what it takes to be a paramedic? Or is there a drive or something that is happening within the colleges to attract these people? And I understand that you said going to high school, reaching out to grade 11 people or starting early from grade nine or so. I was wondering, is there anything that is, can be done within even our D I A C circles? How can we help? How can municipalities help? Or how the college can? Is there an advocacy going on to attract diverse people?
So through the chair, I would, I would say there's a little bit, but probably not as much as there probably should be. What we have seen is, you know, if I look at, generically speaking, diverse populations, I go to say, you know, I'll use Durham colleges as an example. You know, they, they tend to and this is, we're going to start to see a subtle increase in that. But I don't know that there's anything specifically we can do to lobby. We're going to continue to do the things I mentioned, where we're going to try to get it to the high schools. We're going to try to do those sorts of things. Some subtle advertising, perhaps. Those are kind of the key initiatives. Absolutely. I'll work with our, our team here at the municipality to see if there's something that they can suggest as well, because I'm certainly open to suggestions on that. But it's a challenge, again, across all different areas with respects to driving the folks to the college. We got to get them there before we can hire them, and that's, that's the big thing. So I think the colleges really need to do a job on that as well. That, that part of it is our responsibility as well, and I think we got to try to push that a little bit.
Thank you. Further on that, Chair Henry, I'm just wondering if there is a will to do info sessions or is it more responsibility for colleges? I'm just wondering, is that, are there, is there a reach to make them understand an attractive salary and things like that for people to understand within the diverse people, this is what it is. I mean, this is, engineering and doctor is not the only two fields. There are more other fields and there is salary packages and so on. So I think there is a conversation to be had in terms of reaching out to diverse people, telling more. I know that we'd be What is the difficulty on the floor when you reach out to diverse people in terms of understanding what they're going through and understanding their issue and taking them to the hospitals?
Through the chair, so to be honest, we don't have a lot of challenge with that. We're very fortunate. We have done some, obviously, training within our division. Some of our bigger challenges actually used to lie with our First Nations communities, to be quite honest. That was the, the bigger challenges, understanding how to deal with the elders and things like that. We've also done some training specific to that. So we're not seeing any big challenges related to that. And we're very fortunate now that we have a very, you know, diverse group of medics. I mean, we're almost 50/50 with, you know, male versus female. So we're able to leverage some of those, those other challenges with respects to, you know, a female being able to treat a female and things like that. So we, we don't really have any challenges related to that, to be quite honest.
So there's no language barrier, because I think, I think there was a track with, with the fire, that there was a language barrier concern. So you don't have that.
Yeah, through the chair, we, we tend not to have that. If there is anything, you know, really challenging, we have options. We can call our dispatch center, which automatically can get a translator on the line. And to be quite honest, everybody seems to carry a smartphone now and uses Google Translate anyway. So they haven't figured it out long before they involve dispatch. But often when we go to calls with, you know, any potential language challenge, there's generally somebody there that is, that is working with us to help do the translation and things like that.
I'm happy about that. Thank you so much. That'll be all. Thank you, Chair.
Mayor. Okay, members of council, we've now been at this for almost a long time. And I don't know about members of council, but what I'm going to suggest is that, and I know there's more speakers, but respectful, the people that sit in the, in the, in the meetings that control the meetings do not have the ability to get up and leave the meetings during these long dialogues. Lunch is in the back. So what I'm going to suggest is I'm going to ask for a 15-minute recess. I'm going to suggest that you go get your lunch, bring it back to your chair, and we will work through this. I'm looking for a motion for a 15-minute recess. And members of council, 15 minutes means 15 minutes, just so you know. Mayor Barton? 15-minute recess. Counselor Nicholson? You're seconding the 15-minute recess. All those in favor? In opposition? I'm seeing none. 15 minutes, Mr. Clerk, and we'll start the meeting again when the roll call. Thank you. All those in favor? In opposition? I'm seeing none. 15 minutes, Mr. Clerk, and we'll start the meeting again with roll call. Thank you. Do the whole back to order? Mr. Clerk, can you do a roll call, please? Okay, and Counselor Chapman still. Okay, thank you. Members of council, we have quorum in the speakers list. Mayor Watt. Go ahead. Mayor Watt? Mr. Clerk, she's still online? Okay, we, we will come back to Mayor Watt. Counselor Inaudible.
In the interest of time, Chairman, I'll ask my questions to the chief offline. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to Mayor Watt.
Chair, I, I really don't have questions. I'm having internet problems.
Okay, thank you. At that point, we've exhausted the speakers list. Mr. Clerk, a, a recorded vote was called by Counselor Chapman. I'll call that vote now, please.
I confirm Counselor Shahid.
You need a vote, please. If you could, when you get the chance, Mr. Clerk, call the list, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mayor Carter is currently absent. He is noted in the system. We're also missing one vote from one remote participant, Counselor Jupp.
Okay. The vote, the vote carries anyways. I'll leave you to sort that out. I do know the Mayor Carter is speaking at the Chamber of Commerce today in Oshawa, so. Members of council, we're going to move on to item 4.2, Sandra Austin, Director of Strategic Initiatives, Chief Administrative, out of the Chief Administrative Office. And Leslie Ann Folds, Manager of Strategic Initiatives, out of the Chief Administrative Officer's office as well, on the Durham Region 2020 to 2024 Strategic Plan Community Dashboard. Ms. Austin, when you're ready, please start.
Thanks very much, Chair Henry, and members of committee. Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Austin, Director of Strategic Initiatives. And with me I have Leslie Ann Folds, who is our Manager of Corporate Initiatives in the Strategic Initiatives Division. And we're really excited to join you today to walk through which, this new initiative, which is our first ever 2020 to 2024 Regional Strategic Plan Community Dashboard release. You will have the accompanying report for information in your committee agenda. And so as you are well aware, the strategic plan sets the context for how we will achieve our vision of a healthy, prosperous community for all. And the purpose of today's brief presentation is to provide you with some information to share our new user-friendly and easily accessible way for our community to access information about the progress of our strategic plan. So as very quick background for this committee, our current strategic plan was developed by CIO's office staff, but was heavily informed by the community with input and endorsement from our members of the Strategic Plan Task Force. So thank you again to Counselors Watten, Roy, and Mayor Pietri for their leadership, as well as the CIO and Medical Officer of Health, Dr. Robert Kyle, for representing senior staff. This graphic you have seen a number of times. I included it for quick reference as well as for public reference, but it outlines the strategic plan's five goal areas, covering the range and the depth of regional services that we deliver to residents. So currently, we are halfway through the implementation timeframe of our strategic plan, and we've been working hard towards achieving those goals together as a region. And so we're excited to report in a more transparent, and as I say, user-friendly way, to share what we have achieved over the course of plant, of the plan and where we still need to go. So of course, the COVID pandemic caused us to pivot pretty early on in the implementation of the current plan. It required us to deliver our goals differently. And so last year, we did take the opportunity to, to take time to validate that we have the right initiatives and measures in place to take us through to 2024. Staff and leadership across the region participated in exercises to comprehensively review the plan at its midterm. And so during this exercise, teams ensured that the ongoing validity of key performance indicators or KPIs and the associated initiatives contributing to achieving the council-endorsed goals and priorities of the plan. There was a high degree of collaboration between these teams to determine what was the most appropriate content to share in the dashboard, including council-approved plans and targets, key program strategies, and service levels. Also, in 2022, we switched from an external service provider, we had a software-as-a-service arrangement, to an internal tracking system. And so this did result in some modest financial savings. But what it really did was helped to enhance staff capacity in dashboard development and management. To date, we have shared updates on the progress of the strategic plan through information reports directly to council, as well as through the annual Year in Review special sections. At the council orientation in November, we shared a preview of the improved way that we'll be sharing and communicating results on the plan. And in addition to ensuring that all projects and initiatives are connected to the five strategic goal areas that we submitted to council, we've developed the dashboard that highlights our results as well as successes on key initiatives. And I'd like to take a moment to thank our corporate services IT team for all of the help and support that they've put into developing the ARC GIS website that has been updated to share this information publicly. So you will have the link and the information. Please have a look at the, the dashboard and poke around. It'll, it'll give you a really good sense of what's in the plan and how we're doing. We did just want to highlight a couple of areas now, in case you do receive questions and, and calls from residents on the progress of the plan, and so that you're familiar with the contents. So the dashboard contains a couple of components, the first one being our KPIs or our key performance indicators. The KPIs for the strat plan demonstrate the results of efforts by the region towards the goals and implementation, and there is a total of 73 performance indicators, highlighting key results and targets achieved. These KPIs are tracked on an annual basis, and they're given a trend rating to show whether results are trending in the desired direction. Every trend rating has a definition provided within the dashboard. So you may notice for some programs and services that there is a target available. And so that's derived and pulled from previously approved plans and service level commitments. There are also instances where performance indicators, where the target is not available, but we've used in those cases a desired direction to help determine the trend rating. So alongside the KPIs, and I appreciate that this is quite small, it's a screenshot. Alongside the KPIs, we've included initiative updates. And so these provide the community with information on the progress of projects, initiatives, and service delivery that contributes to the improvement of the KPI within each priority area. And lastly, we've included a number of definitions. When you're looking at data and metrics, it's really important to be crystal clear on what it is that we're talking about. And so definitions of the indicators are included under the Indicator Definitions tab. We've made it quite user-friendly and straightforward, along with some additional context on how the value is calculated and links to relevant programs and service descriptions. This tab also contains indicator trend definitions for whether something is improving, whether it's meeting the target, whether it's stable, whether it's not improving, or if there is no data available. So the location of all of this information on durham.ca remains unchanged, durham.ca/strategicplan. You can find it on the ARC GIS site. You can find it on the ARC GIS site for the STRAP plan. And now, I'm just going to turn it over to Leslie Ann Folds, who's going to give you a quick live demo on how to navigate the site so that you can be familiar with the content when you continue to dig into it on your own. Leslie Ann?
Thanks, Sandra. Okay, let me make sure. Tap over? Okay, thanks. So yes, as Sandra mentioned, you have the links in your report. However, if you're trying to find the dashboard, you don't have the report handy or a link, you can access it through the durham.ca page, so that's this page for the strategic plan, and it's this link right up here, the very first one. And that will take you to the ARC GIS page. So as an update, Sandra did let you know that nothing really has changed about this site. It launched in 2020, following the council-endorsed plan, and it was meant to be a more interactive way for members of the public to engage with the content, understand the goals. And so what we've done is we've added some results to this website. So I'll just quickly show you. The way it's set up is a tab-based site, so you can go goal by goal. And once you're in there, it gets increasingly more detailed as you scroll down. So for example, in Community Vitality, it shows the objective as well as the priorities that are part of it, so you can toggle through to see what the different priorities are. And that has all stayed the same since launch. What we've done is added beneath that a number of key performance indicators. So these are the results that we're hoping to achieve, broken down by priority. So you'll see that's 2.1, 2.2, et cetera. And it continues all the way down. You don't need to toggle through this, goes right through to the last priority. One thing I will note is that beneath the tiles, there's often a data disclaimer, so if staff have identified that data is not available, this is where they would make a note. So for example, here we are showing Sense of Belonging in the Community, last updated in 2019. So there's a note underneath that says data on Sense of Belonging is not available for 2020 and has been delayed in 2021 due to COVID impacts. So there's a note there on the tiles themselves. And underneath, there are key initiatives that support those KPIs with links that will take you to the relevant programs or pages for Durham Region. And lastly, I'll show you a new tab that we added, which is Indicator Definitions. Sandra went through that. But here, all the definitions are located, similar idea. You can click through if you're looking for one in a particular goal area. And then, lastly, the indicator ratings themselves. So what does it mean if it's improving? What does it mean if it's not improving, et cetera? So I think that's what I was hoping to show you in the live demonstration. I'll turn it back over to Sandra for the rest of the presentation.
Perfect. Thanks very much. So we're pretty excited about the work that's been accomplished and what continues to be delivered under the current strategic plan. We know that a number of area municipalities are starting to embark on the development of their own plans or the updating of their plans. And so we are talking to your staff quite regularly on the process that we've gone through and some of the key lessons and takeaways that we've learned over the past couple of years, so that it can help in the development of local plans. And we're also looking ahead to envision how our next plan will be developed and what that trajectory will look like. And so as we move into, as we are well into 2023 with this council, we'll be looking to gather additional insights on how the next plan is built and how it's implemented. Our focus will be on developing strategies that once again are heavily informed by the community and supported by data that line up with the various approved long-range plans that council has endorsed. And additionally, we're pretty excited to be bringing an element of strategic foresight to the way that we engage with the community. And so what we mean by that is not simply asking individuals and residents and businesses what their top priority is today. We do collect that type of information, of course, through various forums, but going a step further and engaging in their imaginations and their aspirations on what their communities, through a structured process of exploring future possibilities and what our communities could look like in the future. And so ultimately, that guides the strategic directions that we're making today. So currently, the team is working on a proposed timeline and benchmarks to explore as we start to plan for community engagement into 2024. And we look forward to engaging with this new council in the planning and development of the next regional strategic plan for 2025. So with that, thank you very much for your time, and we'd be pleased to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions? Mayor Foster?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. To try this again, I'm going to give you a motion to suspend the rules all through the agenda and put Report 2023-Cow 9 on the floor.
Okay, signed by Mayor Barton. On suspending the rules to bring this report forward now, called vote, all who's in favor. In opposition, seeing none. Some members of council, the strategic plan item, Report Number 2023-Cow 9 is now on the floor. Mayor Foster?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. An absolutely fantastic initiative. It is, it's easy to use, tons of good information. And I'm going to say but, so I hope you take this as constructive criticism. Most dashboards, you have green, yellow, and red, based on meeting the goal. Many of the items here that are green show that we are improving, but I would suggest that the likelihood of meeting the goal on many of them is quite remote. And I'll just pick one, for example, the number of trees planted. In the next 18 months, I think we would have to plant 400,000 trees to get to our 2024 goal. So I would suggest that that is a red, because we are not on a goal basis in terms of progress, and I don't know how we may change that. And I bring it up, Mr. Chair, that if council has either set a goal that is unattainable or we are not resourcing staff enough to attain that goal. So if we're doing that, improvement is good. We need to recognize it. We need to celebrate improvement, and I hope you guys celebrate for all of the wonderful things that you're doing. But I'm wondering if maybe the reporting changes a little bit, such that we know, you know, the goals that we are imposing on ourselves, if we're actually getting there. And again, please, please take that as constructive and take my congratulations for a phenomenal amount of work. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Austin, did you want to comment?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor Foster, and through the chair. Yes, the point is well taken. It is a constant balance between asking staff and council to set aspirational goals and targets. There are a number of things which we would very much like to achieve. And in these particular instances, yes, they're green because they are improving, so they are trending in the right direction, which is what we would want to see. There are some within the plan that are currently red, and we have full explanations for why they are red. One in particular being in terms of the C task that you just heard about, paramedic overflow delays and the impact that that is having on us achieving our strategic plan goals. So are things trending in the right direction? Yes. Could we add some additional verbiage? And I do think it would be text-based content to say ultimately, here's our goal at the end of five years, and here's where we are currently. And be having that conversation about whether it's realistic to achieve it at the end? Absolutely. But what we don't want to have happen is shortchanging ourselves on those goals, because we think we're never going to reach it. So we should dial it all back. And that's not really the kind of approach. We want to stretch. We want to have those stretch targets. We don't want them to be so far out of the realm of possibility that they're not achievable, but we do want to reach. And we do want to pursue those additional partnerships that will help us achieve goals more efficiently. But I do appreciate the comment. It's well taken.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shahid?
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Ms. Austin, really appreciate you bringing this, and I have in a long time not seen these very in-depth KPIs. So thank you so much for that. I made a note on for that you had a little bit of feedback, which was community safety, poverty, social programs, and service experience. And I believe that's what Mayor Foster is also referring to, is the fact that the goals have been set, and we are not being able to meet the criteria. So can you address this just a little bit more? Is to now we will be entering into 2024. And I blink, I'm pretty sure we're already in mid of February. What are the expectations that you will lay for 2025 onwards, and will this be a strategic plan for 2025, for the next four years?
Yes, thank you for the question and through the chair. The decision was made fairly early on in the process of pulling together this strategic plan to have a five-year time horizon, so it would take us beyond the term of council. And I think personally, I think that's important for a number of reasons. You don't want to uproot your entire strategic direction with every municipal election cycle. So whether it's four years or five years or longer, it could potentially be longer, is something that the new strategic plan task force would contemplate and have a discussion. What I see happening is taking a lot of the work that's already underway through the strategic plan and determining what remains, what can we build upon, and are there some indicators that we've been pursuing that are now perhaps less meaningful for our council and for the community? In that way, we always see the strategic plan as being very much a living, breathing, it's not even a document, it's kind of an entity now. But being something that we revisit and we contemplate often. Are we delivering on those things that are the most impactful? Are we measuring the right outcomes? And so, yes, I absolutely see that being something that is discussed very early on in terms of the timeframe and what those programs, services, and indicators look like, as we have a wealth of information that comes through regular long-term planning cycles, various reports and strategic directions, new things that are coming up that didn't exist in 2020. So for one quick example, because you noted specifically around community vitality, we had the at-home in Durham, we had that target, we knew we were aiming for the initiation of 1,000 units. What we didn't have was org code. We didn't have the Housing First approach so well documented that we have now. So as things continue to evolve, we might look at what those goals are, what's our trajectory? How reasonable can we be in our ability to achieve them, and that goes into the development of the new plan?
Thank you so much. Through you, Chair Henry, about the engagement portal. I see that we at the town are also not being able to get that much feedback that we would like. Are you receiving the same kind of non-engagement or not that much community engagement as well?
It's really, thank you, and through the chair, it's an interesting conversation, because I'm not sure so much as it's an engagement issue. We need to make it interesting and relevant for people to want to engage. They need to see demonstrable outcome in the engagement and the input that they're providing. And so again, with the development of our engagement portal and bringing it internally, once again, we're having that ability to link our various engagement processes for various programs together. So we can draw comments from other outreach and engagement opportunities and use them to inform other projects. So we've been looking at that kind of cross-collaboration and bringing together of different elements where we've gone out to the community. When we did the initial engagement in 2020, or in 2019, before the plan was approved, we were actually quite satisfied with the amount of engagement that we saw. We had 30 organizations that came to individual, we called them turbo sessions, so they were kind of deep dives and things that people were most interested in. We did have a pretty significant response to the survey that we had hosted online. And we really tried to, and will continue to, meet people where they are. We can't expect that people are going to come into regional headquarters and want to sit down and talk to us. But we can go to town fairs, we can go to fall fairs, we can set up pop-up booths at community events where people are, and we can talk to them in those ways and get some really quick but valuable input about what people want to see. And we find that they're much more receptive to that kind of engagement, rather than saying, okay, here's an information session, come between the hours of two and four and talk to us. That doesn't work quite so well. And so we're always looking to meet people where they are, and of course, make things much more digitally accessible, because we do tend to get most of that input online.
Thank you so much. Through you, Chair, I do totally agree. As things will open up, people are going to get more engaged, and there will be a thrive for more involvement, 100%. I'd like to thank you for your team, for the hard work that you put in and continuously putting, and I'm looking forward to see more. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, members of council. That exhausts, oh, Counselor Leahy?
Thanks. Further to Counselor Shahid's points there, I noticed you mentioned in part that you've had about 89 budget engagements and saying that that's an improvement. So what is our improvement like over the last number of years and the number of residents that we've been able to get to engage, just as to show as a success measure?
Thank you, and through the chair, it's a good question. We typically don't set targets for engagement. It's something that we certainly can do. We tend to think more about kind of the quality of the input. And so we look at that, we look at the opportunities to do that outreach. So if you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we didn't have town halls for the budget. So the fact that we had a town hall meant more people could engage, and our engagement numbers went up. It is an interesting point. It's not something that we've tended to track. We certainly could, but I would say that the amount of engagement that we get depends on the amount of effort we put in to engage. So the more effort we do, the more we're getting back, which is a pretty fairly straightforward equation, of course. But yes, we're always looking to augment and to leverage other opportunities where we're already out in the community to get that kind of input.
Yeah, and I just would always say applaud your efforts to date and really encourage that, because it is, it's challenging, because it's daunting, it's a massive budget, it covers so many areas. And then the feedback I get from some people is like, yeah, I go to a meeting, I make a comment, and nothing happens. And we got to get them to be A, engaged, realize that it has a meaningful impact, and show how that input can translate into at least a change or some improvement in the future. Otherwise, they'll engage, they'll speak, they'll see nothing changes, and we'll lose that engagement. So just exactly to your point earlier, making the comment between feedback and how that relates to changes or an impact that they can have to encourage more engagement. So appreciate your efforts to date. So anything we can do to encourage more engagement and show how that engagement translates to changes? As a perhaps, like maybe when you have a town hall, you have the following, you say, last year, feedback in town hall was to do more, let's say, paramedics. Okay, so we've adjusted our paramedic plan to do X, and this is based on feedback we got from multiple paramedics, and this is why feedback is important. And this is an example of the feedback that impacted the direction of the region. So that, the positive reinforcement of the feedback to try and get more people engaged, so.
Yes, thank you, and through the chair, the online platform, your Durham, does include, or does allow for back-and-forth conversation with staff who are moderating the conversation. So we can be receiving those comments, and we can indicate it has been included, it will be included, you'll see that reflected, or thank you for the submission, and leave it at that. Another thing that we've tended to do with, what I'll say, some more kind of deep policy issues, where we're really trying to establish new policy, is to develop a what-we-heard report. And it's pretty simple and straightforward, but really takes and accounts for all of what we received and makes it public. And so anybody who's very interested in the topic can go through and do a review. I know certainly, you know, it's been a long process on the municipal comprehensive review, but that is pretty standard practice for planning as well. Take everything you heard, comment on what you heard, respond to what you heard, and indicate how that's affecting change. So we do that from a policy perspective, and we certainly try to apply that to strategic planning as well.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Those are my questions here. Thank you.
Counselor McDougal? Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I love data. Data is awesome. And this gives us data, which is both good and bad, because sometimes when you share data, you open yourself up to criticism. It also reminds me a little bit of It also reminds me a little bit of like critical path management. So for example, and I want to follow up on what, on what Mayor Foster was discussing. So for example, the tree program or the cycling infrastructure or many things where we have an identified direction, a target says 750,000 trees, we're at 123,000 now. So one tree planted would make us green, but we're not on target. So I mean, in, in some ways, like the green is good because yes, we planted a tree, but we're nowhere near on target to reaching our goal for the 2024 from where we were. The other thing is in terms of the data, some of it is, is we don't know exactly maybe perhaps where we started. We have a target listed, but we don't have where we started. So we don't know where we are on that trajectory. So that's just kind of my thought in terms of, you know, looking forward to, not all of these, but some of these, perhaps we can say, you know, we're on target, we're behind. And that's great information for me, in my opinion, as a councillor to know with, you know, where we're steering our resources here. Do we need to put more resources to this if we really want to achieve this as part of our strategic plan? Or are we going to let this one fail? So thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. And through the chair, I might ask, Leslie Ann, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I could. Through the chair, thanks. I agree with your comments about data and sort of putting them out there. It kind of brings more questions. But I think in this case, that's a good thing. This is the first time we've done something like this. And to your point on, and also Mayor Foster's point on the improving designation. So we looked across the plan and looked at sort of the way the numbers are trending and gave it sort of a 10% band up or down. So it's not just one tree would make us improving, it's a, a portion of the previous data point. So you'd need a previous data point to get you a trend, or you need a baseline to give you a trend. So that's kind of the backend data. I think going forward, we can certainly explore showing more of that so that people have more access to, to how the trend actually looks with, with numbers. Yeah, that's, that's kind of what I wanted to share. Thanks.
Do you have another? Okay, thank you. Members of council, that exhausts the speaker's list, so I will call the vote on the, on the item. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Thank you very much for the presentation. Members of council, there are no delegations, no correspondence. We'll go to reports. Item 7.1, I'll need a mover. Moved by Mayor Foster, seconded by Counselor Brenner. Report Number 2023, Cow Number 6, is the report on Durham Region Roundtable on Climate Change Leadership Committee. The item is now on the floor. Mr. Clerk, online, no ends. Then in that case, I will call the vote on the report. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Mr. Clerk, the last remaining item is 7.3. Members of council, it is Report Number 2023 Cow 8 Tender Award for Additional Financing for the Regional Municipality on the Durham Tender for the Early Learning Childcare Center Playground Refurbishments in Various Locations. Moved by Mayor Foster, seconded by Counselor Brenner. The report is now on the floor. Counselor Nicholson.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of questions to staff. We've been through a number of these initiatives in the city of Oshawa recently. And one thing we have found is that by delaying projects and phased construction, we artificially raise the price in a project. I note that this tender is for a series of projects over three years. Was there any consideration given to fully building out these projects in one calendar year? Does it really save, save on costs?
Sorry, I'll go to Mr. Manuel, please.
Thank you. And through the chair, the projects were originally planned to be spanned over several years. But with the ability to tap into some of the COVID relief funding, these projects have been bundled together. So they will all be delivered together by the same contractor.
That's not the question I asked. They're scheduled to be done in 2023, 2024, and 2025. By delaying the cost, are we seeing a higher price on the combined contract? Because we're delaying projects out two or three years.
Through the chair, we're not delaying them out through two to three years. We're actually delivering them all this year as part of this tender.
Okay, well, it doesn't say that in the report. That's what I was asking. Report indicates that it be spread out, out to 2025. So you're telling that all these playground upgrades are occurring this year?
Yes, the original plan in the budget forecast was to deliver them in 2022, 2023, and 2025. But when we had the ability to use the COVID funding, we accelerated all the projects. So they're all being done together as one bundle.
Well, then let me go on record as applauding staff for that initiative because that's exactly what I was hoping for, that I was bringing forward. We found in the city of Oshawa, we saved ourselves over $3 million by moving projects up and doing them early, even if we have to borrow to fund them because the cost of borrowing was far, far less than the construction annualized increases. I'm just wondering if staff could forward to me the list of the projects in Oshawa that you're doing, just so I have it for my record. Thank you.
So this is regional council. So could we forward the list of all the projects to all members of council, please? No matter which community they're in. Thank you. Thank you. Members of council, that exhausts Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Just really briefly, if I'm going to page four or five in the report, when it's talking in 6.2, it talks about Project Custer Pollard's property tax beast at 329.5. Is that like an annual property tax impact? Or where, where's the funding for that source coming? Is that, is it a permanent property tax cost to fund this and other things? Or is this just a one-time spend?
I'm looking.
So through the chair, if I may, this was part of the budget, so property check, that's a capital project all on its own that was funded that way.
Okay. So a capital project, so just one time for this, this isn't an ongoing cost?
That's correct. It's a capital project.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Schumer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. And, and on that same page, well, in other places too, speaks to 515,000 at the discretion of Commissioner Finance. So we understand at this point, we don't know how that is going to be paid for.
So if I be through the chair, essentially, when we do that, you'll see that fairly frequently over the course of a year. That gives me the discretion to, to go look at whether there is additional revenue during the course of a year that we can then apply to this, whether there are cost savings that we can apply to this, whether it ends up coming from the operating impact rate stabilization reserve. So it gives me the flexibility to determine where that may be at the best point in time when we start to expend the funds.
Thank you. And we'll receive an update of some kind at that time?
Through the chair, not always. Like we do our regular reports to council on our budget test actual status. So sometimes we'll comment in there where the source of the funding was. So it depends on where the source of funding. Sometimes it comes through various reports, depending on the nature of, of what gets before. We don't do a list of, at the discretion of Commissioner Finance, in a standalone report. But it does come through other individual reports, depending on the nature of the project itself.
Okay. All right. Not sure if I'm comfortable with that process, but that, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll try one more time. Is there any other speakers? Seeing none, I will call the vote on the item. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Before we go to, there are no confidential matters. That is the business of the day before I go to adjournment. Members of council, I do want to remind you all that on Friday, February 17th, there is a special meeting of regional council. You would receive the notice. It is at Deer Creek. There are some important matters on that agenda, and I look forward to seeing you all there. Mr. Clerk, there is no online for that meeting, is there? There is no online, there is no online for that meeting. Mayor, or sorry, Counselor Nicholson.
I don't want to refer to me, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, sorry. It's been a long day.
I understand. I just wanted to get, go on record that I will not be attending on Friday as I have a family funeral on that date. Just a recent death.
Sorry to hear that, our thoughts are with you and your family. We're now to the point of the meeting where I'm looking for an adjournment. That was very fast, Mayor Barton. Seconded by Counselor Mokahi on adjournment. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. Have a great day, everyone. Thank you to staff.